So first call the order is comments. Anyone on the, no one in the room, anyone on the screen? Uh which way public comment?
I mean, because when we look at the screen for public comment, we're actually turning our heads away from.
Right.
Oh, the public.
They did not.
Yeah, but that's unfortunately how we.
It's a small room.
Yeah, it's probably fine though. So in the consented event, we have a most perfect consented event.
I'm your chief of working center agenda.
Where that was second. Any discussion? Old and paper?
Hi.
Can you pose? Great, now we're on to um. Okay, uh my first goal from Andrew, like do you want to, before we launch into that? I think we have the board, anyone else? The effort is Andrew, Tom, Chris, Kim, Libby, uh Jason. Everyone else has done over the last uh past month to deal with um both the planning situation at high school and also just to support the. Maybe you've reached out and uh offered take care and and other services, uh all of which is appreciated. So it's been a very tough month for Montblair, everybody wants to come to work, I think, see it real well together. Um and uh it looks like, as Andrew told us, that we were in a, about as good a place as we can be with the high school. Um and uh maybe really just the tireless efforts of both Andrew and Tom and the next man are going above and beyond to make sure that uh this is great and stuff all those things. Uh get school started um in a safe and effective manner. So with that, I will start with Adam. So uh we are in the throes of uh putting things back.
Excuse me, you all are muted. There's, no one can hear out here. I think you need to unmute, please. And thank you, this is Lisa Burns. I, I would like you to unmute, please. Could you?
And it's not working.
Sorry, no.
For one person just to like give the memo. Yeah, Anna, can you tell Anna to eat? So let people know that we're trying.
Tess, Tess, can you all hear me in the room? This is Anna. I can hear you all and I can hear Lisa. Um I'm not sure, it, to me, it does not sound muted in the room. Lisa, I'm able to hear and I'm here in the Zoom. Lisa, can you hear me talking right now? This is Anna in Zoom.
Is there any way for you to chat with Lisa, Anna, to let her know?
Yes, I, I can do that. And Emma, I can hear you. I can hear everyone in the room, so.
Oftentimes leaving back will help with audio.
Thank you. And sometimes it's just a matter of turning the volume up on your computer. I definitely, I definitely found myself with that.
Right, or like muting my computer.
Right, from something else, yeah. Thank you, Anna.
Yep.
So um, so let's see here. So um, well, we are, we want to go backwards a little bit and then go back. So uh initially, when the flood happened, uh this bit, the insurance folks uh were right on top of it. They had a periclean head down immediately before I even got there.
Excuse me again, um it seems that Orca Media is on mute. Um I'd appreciate it if you would ask Orca Media to actually broadcast sound because there's no sound coming through and chat was uh disabled.
See if that helps.
Enable chat, uh enable chat just for a minute, play.
Yeah, yes, Lisa, I am sending you a chat. Um I will enable it for everyone, but I'm chatting with you uh actively, so check that. Lisa, can you hear me? This is Anna Hipco in Zoom. I don't think Lisa can hear anything from Zoom or the room. I, yeah.
So uh we um, so we immediately, the next day.
Um, this is not working. And as you see on the upper screen, Orca Media is in fact muted um out here. My volume is up to a hundred percent. You can clearly hear me and I see uh Anna has reactivated chat, but uh this meeting is a public meeting and it's not being broadcast. Please see what Orca Media can do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Just. They're bringing me a new camera. It's coming through this mic. Clearly not muted.
Hear you, but I don't think it's your camera.
Yeah.
Well, it's not good audio right now. We're gonna get.
If you would look at your screen, Orca Media is muted.
That's, isn't that the case in every board meeting? I think it is.
It's, there's a different Orca Media that's screen recording, so they're probably.
Are you or not muted?
No.
Yeah.
I, I have just, I have just renamed Orca Media that is not muted, Union Elementary School. And I can hear it. I can hear Lisa. I, I believe the issue is a technical issue uh for Lisa and Lisa, if you can hear me, I'm direct chatting you. Um chat is enabled for everyone at this point. Um Lisa, if you can hear me, let's uh communicate in chat and try to work this out, but uh but everything technically is working.
David Delkard, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So, um, so uh the next day, we immediately started, they immediately started pumping water out of the basement. We had about four and a half feet or so of water in the basement, kind of coming through all the foundation penetrations and we think probably groundwater as well.
Doesn't sound hurt though.
They started popping, they immediately brought up a uh dehumidification team from Mississippi. We set up uh they as soon as the water was gone, they, what they've been doing is they've been pumping hot air into the basement and then sucking it out at two ends, pulling that out. And then uh on the main floor and the second floor, they've been pumping in air conditioning the two means to keep humidity down as well as to pressurize the rest of the building. So the building is basically under negative pressure. So everything's been coming out, leaving the basement. Um, that has been going well. Uh the anticipation is that they will be done with that process um by the end of next week. Um, which will be uh which will allow Tom enough time to do the, they've been able to work around that equipment, this big giant tubes running throughout the building. Um but that should give Tom enough time to finish off the work he has to do. Uh the step that we're in now is the disinfection phase. While right now they're running tests in the basement with three different disinfectants. They actually took the swabs yesterday, so a little bit result that there's a one that's working better than the others or whether they all work well. Um and as soon as we have that result, we'll know which direction to go in regards to that. And they're basically gonna be spreading out the non-technical term, but a hospital grade disinfection down there in the basement. Um, once that gets done, they'll do another test. And what we should be fine at that point. Uh we're also gonna do some air testing on the first level to make sure that you know, everything is good. They're like, say, it should be, we're expecting nothing but positive results on that because they're well, they're a venture. Uh, we were very fortunate in that the water never reached the first floor and it never reached our um mechanical equipment, the individual devices, actuators. Uh, so the boilers did get flooded, some electrical panels got flooded. Um that, a couple of water tank, water heaters or a water heater, uh that is in the process of being put back in place. Uh water heaters for the kitchen is going in. Wasn't still Friday and yesterday, but will be uh installed today. Uh we'll have one of the boilers up, the burners getting installed on Friday. BDC is a couple of the BDC things that that got wet. Um those are in place or in state and just need to be hooked up with correct digital control. So uh we did, but luckily it didn't get wet. It was just the main brain that got a little bit wet.
So are these new or are these like you're taking the, the old ones, we're taking out, removed, dealt with and being reinstalled? Or these are new, replace them?
Uh basically, they, yeah, we're replacing, they got wet, we're replacing, we're replacing it.
Yeah.
Uh one of the big pieces that we don't have to deal with right now, but we will potentially is um the electrical service that was in the basement. Um we're gonna move upstairs. We're very fortunate in that our electrical cutoff is about size, so we're able to kill the power for the building for a week or so without having to swing to it. But as part of code and and uh I think it's Montblair specific and Barry, they now want electrical services above the Budland. But luckily, we've got space right above where the stuff is now. It has to be replaced anyway. Um once something like that gets wet, have to replace it, but we've got, they do ninety day waivers and they know it's been quite a while. It's all been inspected and it's all been joined up on. Um site wise, uh we're very fortunate that the game field and the baseball field and the back practice field survived really well. Uh softball field is gone. The, the play that was in softball just went away. Um so what we've done is we filled that back in. We'll address rebuilding that either in the spring or the fall, probably in the spring. Uh the front mud lot and the practice field out front. Um, took it pretty, it's, it's remarkable. If you go by now, you'll see they're scraping it off. It's an amazing amount of for what you wouldn't know is down there, there's an amazing amount of dirt. So we're in the process of um scraping that all down. Uh Chip Seeding from uh Diamond Tech, um who does our athletic fields, does the nominees, does these are two. He's working with that advance. We're in the spring, they'll go back and reseed and recreate and do their soil testing and like that. Right now, what we're doing is we're scraping them, we're scraping the silth off, we're gonna aerate it, throw some grass down, just stabilize it and then roll back in the year. We've got half a good practice field out front. It's, didn't get affected, wasn't affected by silt, so we at least have that front piece. Um Matt Link, I've been working with Onion River Soccer, so as I understand it, there's probably clarity on the roundness, but middle school soccer is going to practice up at the college applying art screen. And we're, we're working with Chips, helping them and we're helping Onion River kind of maintain that field, which is fine because we would have otherwise rented fields out of Dog River. Those fields are those bits and toes. Uh those, those fields are in up shape. Um, so I think Matt's got a very good plan on how he's been on shuffle things athletic, athletic field room. Once, we probably won't get those other fields back during the year, so we'll probably have to plan on it, which is okay, because those fields needed to rest anyway. And they'll just be better for it, you know, and yeah, but especially the mud lot field, I think um as part of this reconstruction, it's gonna be much better, will be, get a much better practice field. Um, you know, the impacts for the rest of the buildings, uh Mickey and I want to say that, that the one thing that, you know, Kim and Chris and Tom have done an amazing job and worked tirelessly, but Tara and Mickey and their crews just picking up the slack and yeah, doing their, doing their job as football coach once said. Um, it's been great. Mickey's been able to afford part two and sort of learning and the, the summer, summer school or with the right, with the right joint biology as well, same on their school. Um so he's been able to um been able to uh that, those people, those folks, while Tara and her group has been sort of sort of the construction that's been happening. Going really well and we were all planning for a nice quiet audience, but, but at least we've been able to uh I don't think anyone's overburdened by it all. And uh this has been great. With regards to just get it done, get it fixed and all of the contractors that we work with of our, our, have all stepped up, so. Uh we'll get our, we'll get our air tests and our soil tests back this week and you know, the presumption is that we've got a plan moving forward and that schedule should not be interrupted. That's that's the expectation at the moment. It's a gap.
The schools were kind of disturbing. Did that like mess with the foundation or anything?
No, no, they were isolated. They were, it was more like an old, you know, they, when they wanted, you know, they wanted them by the gym, they were like, oh, it's a sewer. That when they put the issue on, they didn't fill it in and they soaked the water.
And you started the electric, this probably is the right term, but electromagnetic energy.
They, I think they could sound, I think sounding is a better term. Um, so.
See if there's any more.
Yeah, we had, Visbit had um had their building consultants come through. Wise gentleman of twenty-four years old. But they had, they had a group of engineers that have come through and and it's sort of not only a check on the work we're doing, it's like, we're not overdoing it, but also to make sure that we're doing we're not underdoing. So that report, I believe, is probably, he said it's, they were expecting it this week, so by next week. Um, we should have. Yeah, yeah, we started all that work, so uh so yeah, there's no, there's no apparent structure.
Any of the young air quality tests come back yet?
No.
Yeah.
The ones on the first floor are being promoted.
Yeah, like is that, that's sort of the only potential you know, sticking point for having kids reenter the building at this point?
Um, it could, yeah, it could be. And at the same time, the people who are professionals in this, we requested, like Andrew and I requested to do the ears, I think, on the first floor. And they're like, yeah, we should do that, but it, it wasn't like a priority. Put that right off the path. So I, so our professionals aren't overly concerned about it, um but you know, feeling peace of mind that we are like, yeah, we're gonna want that, you know, and we believe for the first month, then we can let it off a little bit after that. So uh, so yeah, the guys, I mean, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're working with Katie Associates up at Berkeley. I'm, I'm pretty good. Um, so they're a well-respected testing agency. On its own side.
That's another question.
Yeah.
Is there any, I mean, it seemed like there must be some cost to the history, like deductible or something or?
It's five thousand dollars.
Or probably deductible is probably gonna increase over there. I was just wondering, are there unexpected significantly spent for this?
They had not said, no, and actually uh they're gonna cover uh, they're gonna cover contents. So we've gone through and we've been through, we didn't have a ton in the basement with the high school. Uh, well, we've already started that process. We've been touring everything and getting quotes and pulling that all together. Uh, but no, they've been very good. They, they uh, there's a few things that we're not a hundred percent sure on. I think we're pretty confident that they probably won't. I think, I think they were pretty good. I think, but we'll see. And now, and, and again, we, I can't say that, that work with us. They had the, they had the burner order on Wednesday, but we made it sick, go like. So we'll probably be working on, we've got three boilers, we'll probably be working on the one for the first couple of weeks. Uh that'll be fine, so it's just not water. And actually, we're gonna convert, our plan is to convert right now, the oil furnaces make hot water for the building. Uh we're gonna convert, we're gonna probably put the heat pump hot water heater in there to take care of the summer load, so.
One, next, pretty quickly, along those lines, there are um improvements that can be made that make the building more resilient in the future. And presumably, we're gonna have future events similar to this. Some, there are other things that can be marbing um that are in upgrades and also in progress.
I would say the only real uh future improvement we're doing right now is landing the living room micro bolt entrance. Yeah, that, yeah, we'll probably end up, we may end up uh yeah, that's, that's the first one to jump off. Right now, we did, we just, given the fact that school was starting in six, so it needs to go ahead though. Get back here, we are, yeah.
Um, there were a number of capital projects we wanted to do to all of our buildings this summer. Did this impact their timeline at all?
A little bit, a little bit. So we're fortunate in that, in working with it well, you know, they're they're not gonna be rebuilding a small storefront down on Main Street. Plumbers, small electricians, small contractors, yeah, they're gonna be really difficult. We, I think we're in pretty good shape. Obviously, things aren't as smooth just because we lost a week and people just jumping into the breach, you know, they're not gonna do the ultimate reconstruction. Uh you know, we lost the electricians for a week, they were just wandering the building right now and all that. So we're a little bit behind, but I'm still optimistic that we will fundamentally be done before kids get in school. You know, there may be somebody that needs to get in and do a little work here, a little bit there, but those sort of banging of nails and cutting of two by four will done, hey, gone before school starts. The guidance office at, at uni, at Main Street Mill uh and the cafeteria re, new stairs in the cafeteria and all that, that's basically waiting for she brought to be sanded and painted and ceilings. Uh over here, the little gym is, is all studded up. They're rapping in the electric pole right now. Um, and the gym or the auditorium is uh they're, they pull, had to pull some seats to get the lift in there, but again, once they'll get rocking and rolling in there, they should be, should be pretty shit. So again, it's good, yeah, it's gonna, it's not gonna be done and done by the thirty first, but we won't have, you know, the building full of contractors. So maybe, so maybe you can get in for a couple hours now.
Were we able to start on any windows this summer?
No.
Oh, okay. What was holding up on that?
Well, that was, that was a cost, not necessarily a cost issue, but coordination issue with regards to the coordination issue.
Okay.
But it's still, it's there, it's been designed and it's.
This is related to, and some of our, you know, building upgrade projects are connected to the Asur funding. Is any of that kind of, because we have a deadline of September twenty twenty four on that at all?
Yeah, yeah, Asur, the auditorium is, or excuse me, Little Gym is an Asur project. The uh cafeteria is an Asur project.
And that's.
Over in Main Street Mill, yeah. You, you redid the stair, the circulation, if you have, there was something truly, really thought was important. Uh so we got that one. Got that one going. So next year, early, early finishes, kitchen.
And we might get an update more on this, we had a Philly meeting next week, but in terms of the track and.
So I met with the engineers on the track and uh one of the things that we talked about was the idea of moving where our, our uh retention pond or treatment area is, into a different location and uh they believe that we can do that, which would really um significantly reduce the amount of soils that needed to be shipped up to Coventry, so that we can kind of take that out of the next week. I just have to do a little more testing in that area, that one area to really find that. So uh that's on my list of things to do is to, and um reissue that, been set out probably, um I think at a time in December, but I'm a hundred percent sure, a hundred.
Right.
But, but this, but this one's true.
Yeah. Kind of connected by to what Scott was saying, this all begs the question of not if this will happen again, but when this will happen again. You know, I think we thought Irene was the hundred year or five hundred year storm, and now it turns out it was a ten year storm. Um, so you know, thinking about that, I'm curious, just like technically, MHS is in the flood plain, yes, firmly. And squarely in the flood plain. Um, RBS is in the flood plain, I would imagine. Do we get flood insurance that kind of allows and provides a larger umbrella of protection or I just, I've heard lots of different things about flood insurance up at the last month and, you know, who can qualify and who can't and what it covers and what it can't. But you know, just obviously, as we're thinking about this, it feel, and we're gonna be laying out large sums of money to make these changes and improvements and additions to our, our campuses. You know, just the resilience piece, you know, what can be done, can we raise things twelve to fourteen to twenty-four inches and does that even help? Or are there other things that can be done as we're about to sink, you know, lots of money into these upgrades and improvements that are clearly valuable and yet it feels like we're on shaky grounds.
Well, yeah, it's a good question for this bit. They obviously, they obviously are
Yeah.
working with us and covering things, so.
Right.
That's a, that's a good thing. But, and the other, the, the thing about this bit is that they're, it's the Vermont School Board Insurance Trust, where they schools are there, they, so they're not gonna be like, oh, we're not gonna cover you guys anymore. We're dropping that line of insurance. They're, they're always gonna be helpful. Um, now whether they're not their underwriter overwriter, traveler, travelers is their insurance company. So whether travelers wants to do it anymore, that's a different, that's a different conversation, but that's a will definitely, uh it's gonna be a conversation, it's gonna obviously happen.
Yeah. There's also some things that I know in our meeting, who knows all the real stuff, so. Um, but as I understand it, the way our soccer field has been designed and the way our baseball field has been designed, the reason why they survived so well, even though they were under the same amount of water, is because they've been designed to drain, right? So we do have certain things in place, particularly outside, you know, that um helped with this situation, so that it's not catastrophic and possibly tear ground. The building, I think, lifting, uh right, ginormous building like that is probably out of the question. Um, so it's yeah, I think, I just don't think that's a typical thing to do, yeah.
And I don't live in fields either, just because when you live in somewhere there, they're gonna watch you level it off somewhere else, you know.
Yeah. But they're, they did really, those two fields did really well.
Yeah, it was really, I think, I think that it was the, the log jam at the ridge itself that really
Yeah.
Mike's around and over them, yeah, calmed down as it, after it got passed, that's where it really, all of them, most of the mud and stuff is, so. By the time I got to the building, it had sort of slowed down and spread out.
Did you say the track surface was still?
Not too rough. Yeah, yeah. You started some.
Andrew and I are discussing this right now. Appreciate all your updates and your videos.
Yeah. It looked like the, like the kind of road out to the track, got it. That one, guys, yeah, that one has been, so we, the parking lots have been the bad areas have been cut out, backfilled with uh and have been backfilled, haven't been paved yet. And I'm sure it's just a matter of waiting for a, a project that will justify loading up the, the mix and doing not only our project, but another project to count on, but they, they've been, the campus will be safe. The campus will be safe while those sort of trip hazards are gone to this point.
I want to reiterate the things that Jim voiced at the beginning of the meeting, but um you know, I've been spending a lot of time in the public pool and here and there, out and about, and lots of people have been singing your praises and um you know, I think it's unfortunate that you've had to be tested in this way.
Again.
So much. Um but I did message Libby and I was like, please don't quit your day job, even though you're so good at disaster management. But like, you really do have like sort of a special talent in that way and.
Yeah, it's great to have you. Andrew and his team were in.
Tom, Tom's group, they, they.
Yeah, well, just deep appreciation to everyone. And if there's anything, I feel like probably everyone at this table would be willing to pitch in if there's anything getting closer to the deadline of like bringing people back into the building. If there's, if we need more hands for something.
We've gotten good with shovels and great.
Let us.
Thank you, friends.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, Orca has requested just a quick break so we can switch cameras.
Okay.
So just take a quick pause.
Um, and uh just do technical difficulties, we'll reopen uh we have a comment for a minute to.
Thank you.
These are your comments.
Yeah, I apologize for my technical failures earlier. Um and I wanted to just make two comments apropos to today's uh meeting about uh your, the school board's priorities. First, I wanted to thank you for rescheduling the meeting. Um, to make sure you get this important work done before school starts. Um, to make sure you get this important work done before school starts. I also wanted to thank each and every one of you for all the work you've done over the summer researching where our students are and the trends in the district and talking to parents and uh, you know, researching functional school districts around, uh, the country to see how they uh, deal with improving academics. So thank you so much for all the hours and hours of work you've already done this summer and for today. Um, specifically, I, I'm sure you all came over it as you were researching and talking to other school leaders that one approach to, um, improving academics is to involve, uh, parents and caregivers. And one way that in the literature seems, and speaking to other members, uh, uh, in high functioning school districts is to provide, uh, yearly, semestral and weekly syllabi to each, uh, to, to all parents where they can access what is in fact, being taught over the school year, over the semester, and then as scheduling shifts around, uh, in a specific week, so parents, uh, can assist in their children's learning, especially in our low homework environments of the, uh, elementary and middle schools. So I would like to, uh, I, I will be anxiously watching what you report and come up with today, but the parents I spoke to and the people across the country, some experts, some just, uh, other families, other school board members all, uh, listed that, and it seemed like, I know you all have read about it and talked to people about it, but that you would consider, um, requiring that. And my second point is also apropos to academics. Um, and I'll make it brief because I've gone over my minute, but, um, I think there's a lot of people and our, our, uh, Rockspur member just mentioned concerned about the, um, the flooding and the health implications, but most importantly, I think that, um, I would like to ask the board to uh, respectfully to reconsider funding a two million dollar track in a floodplain um, in this climate where pretty much everyone has agreed that this is not uh, once in a hundred years, it's not a once in a ten year, and people are asking questions about whether it will happen next month in two months, next year, or what. And two million dollars could really go a long way to improving academics in our school district, and I think funding a track on that may in fact even run into legal implic- implications because it is in the flood hazard zone. Um, and I would like to ask you all to consider revisiting two million plus dollars for a track in a floodplain. Thank you for your time and thank you, thank you for addressing, um, the academic issues and make, finally making academics one of the three priorities in our school district. Thank you, and I look forward to a really great year.
Thanks, Lib. All right.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Um, all right, so we're gonna get started with the retreat part of our meeting. And, um, for those of you who have the document that Anna sent around with the agenda that included times in it, please ignore those times because those times were, are old. Um, I have an updated one in front of me, and that also being said, um, I welcome assistance on timekeeping. So I'll try and remember to say, oh, we're gonna spend twenty minutes on this chunk of whatever, and so, and I'll try and keep my eye on the clock, but I also love a backup, so if anybody else who wants to also keep their eye on the clock so that something stays twenty minutes. That I, um, appreciate that. Uh, because we have a lot to get through, um, by noon, and I heard Libby say as we were getting started, she has a meeting at noon, so we want to let Libby get to her meeting. Uh, on her next meeting.
In this room. We don't really have a choice.
Uh, and we have a lot to get through. What, once again, that all being said, um, we have, Jim and Libby and I have prepared, um, kept in mind that perhaps we will run over or not complete this full agenda, uh, by twelve o'clock on the dot, and so have reserved a bit of time at next week's board meeting to carry this over into that if we need to. And as a reminder, we have our first meeting in September has been extended to be four hours to be able to do part two of this retreat, which is the goal setting part, so, um, we're keeping all of that in mind, time we're keeping in mind. Can I confirm? So we are not meeting? I feel like I had another hold last week of August.
Correct.
We are not, okay.
Yes.
And we decided that September sixth was going to start at?
Well, we haven't figured, it's either four thirty or five o'clock. Um, I got responses from everybody, but I haven't landed on that yet.
Got it.
Sorry to interrupt you. No problem. Um, so even with the time crunch, I didn't want to let go of a warm-up exercise as a way of just getting everybody's voices in the room. Also, we haven't seen each other in a while, so this isn't gonna be any kind of like big crazy thing, but I just thought, let's go around the room and just do a quick checking question. Um, so saying just very briefly, how are you? Um, and, um, one favorite memory you have from your education? Your years as a student, any year as a student, any part being a student. And because I'm making you do this, I'll go first. Um, I'm doing okay, I'm doing okay. I like it when the sun's shining, so I'm glad the sun's back out today. Um, and I, oh, um, I did give this one a little thought, uh. When I was a junior in high school, I, uh, my social studies curriculum was all centered around a national competition called We the People. And I got to be, um, and part of that was to compete against other um, groups of students from other schools around the state of Wisconsin and we won, which means we got to go to Washington DC and compete against students across the country. I actually can't remember how we fared at, at the national level, which means you closed and win. But it was just a really amazing experience to participate in that with my classmates, and it helped the history of our country sink in for me in a way that I don't think it would have, um, otherwise. So that was, that was a fun, fun part of being a student for me.
Uh, how am I? I'm doing well. It's been a weird summer, uh, it's good to see everyone, uh, but definitely between the flooding, uh, that break down to Ireland, came back. Well, Philly were washed away. Uh, kind of been dealing with that and also, yeah, just uh, had to admit it's a little, little worrisome, kind of thinking about, you know, how this town survives in the flood zone and there are plummeting. Um, uh, memories from school. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with the US history thing. Uh, I had, just because I, I think really showed the power of education. I had, uh, an amazing AP US history teacher, uh, booked by sophomore and junior year. Um, who, I, I grew up at a, like, pretty conservative suburban Illinois high school, and he was you know, kind of a big time lefty and, um, really kind of showed me uh, different ways of thinking and ways of thinking about social issues and the world and our place in it, and, uh, very influential person in my life, so. I will go with that.
I'm doing well, also worried, um, of time change and stuff. But I've been, we've been kayaking and mountain biking, and I have a huge construction project at home that I'm taking on, which is obsessed, but it's good. Um, but there are school, we read Othello, I think I was a junior. And, um, I just really loved it, and a lot of kids were having trouble and I was gonna kind of be helpful for other kids and I really emulate Iago's capacities, but not his I would, I would love to be able to use his capacities to empower people instead of how he uses them, so I just really liked reading like a lot of them. You're good.
So I'm okay. I would be lying to you if I didn't say if it's raining at night, I can't sleep because I'm thinking about whether or not my school's flooding again. Um, but last night I took it PM, Advil PM, I recommend it, it knocks you right out. So last night I got a good night's sleep.
I just gotta point out that it's been raining for us every night.
Oh, I'm aware. Which is why the Advil PM last night, because I haven't had much sleep. Um, and, but I'm fine. And, uh, schools are my happy place, so it's hard to pick one actual moment. My dad was a, um, sixth grade teacher, and he was my sixth grade teacher, and he was very, he was very act, active in the community, so I was always in a school growing up, always. My mom worked a lot, and so I was always with my dad. And, uh, so um, it's hard to pick one, but I could say when he was my sixth grade science teacher, which he was, uh, he was also everybody's coach, like, everybody called him dad. Um, I can remember one time we must have all like been asleep or something in sixth grade in science and he, and all of a sudden I look up and my dad is standing on top of his lab table in the front of the room screaming, wake you people, and then jumped on the floor and slammed the front of my desk. Um, and like all of us just busted out laughing and, and I can, I just, he was just so, he was such a good teacher. And so it's probably why I chose the path I chose, but, um, yeah, I can't, schools are my happy place, which makes it hard to see tubes and ET like things going through one of them right now, so. Uh, but I can say that's one of my fond memories of my daddy and my sixth grade science.
That all makes sense now.
Yeah.
Together. Um, yeah, also feeling just the existential dread of the summer and also have been having floodmares. Um, and, you know, we manage a small farm on our property and it's been a tough summer, um, for survival for animals and plants. Um, it has, no part of our farm has been unaffected. Um, so yeah, so it's been, it's been tricky and challenging, um. And, but generally we're doing great, all things considered. Um, yeah, it's, this is a fun exercise, you know, sometimes I feel like I don't remember anything, and it feels like very, very long ago. Um, so it's been fun to kind of, uh, just drum up some old memories. It was funny, the first thing that came to me was in preschool when a teacher came across the room with a giant tower of Jell-O jiggling on a plate, and because of its mobility, I was, I was convinced it was alive. And ran into a corner of him and I've never eaten Jell-O. Um, so don't Yeah. Um, but then I, I flipped to, uh, yeah, sixth grade when my our entire grade took a trip to Cape Cod for like an immersion studies week in the ecology of uh, the sea coast in Cape Cod, and it was just like an incredible bonding experience, you know, like living in bunk houses with your classmates and just really getting to have like an enriching experience of doing hands, you know, a lot of, especially back in the eighties, a lot of school was spanned and delivered and the, the idea that we had just this opportunity to like, you know, really learn in an outdoor classroom and super engaged. For me, who wound up um, and I do remember my ninth grade biology teacher who ruled with an iron fist, she was the biology mother. And she had such high expectations of every kid who came through that, and the curve was woof, like her test, like, you know, it was hard to do well in her class, but she just, um, just held this love for biology in, in the jars and the, uh, and so it was just a really powerful class, and she definitely inspired my path. My friend.
Um, I am doing fine. It's like that question is just really terrible this summer, but I'm doing fine by all outward measures, and then it's just like such a heavy sad summer in, on so many levels that I'm not even gonna talk about it because I'll get too emotional, but, um, school, school, I kind of feel the same way, like this like blur of like, wait, what do I remember? What are my favorite memories? But, um, the things that pop out are the things that I'm sensing a theme a little bit that were like very hands-on, applicable to the real world. Um, I remember my middle school math teacher, and I went to Montpelier Schools, so this guy's long gone. But, um, my middle school math teacher did an, an activity with everybody where you've got like a certain amount of money and you invested it. And then you like tracked it on, um, you know, in the newspaper, because that's where things were done back then. With like how your, how your stock was doing, and so you could buy as many shares of whatever you wanted with the money that you had, and then you were like tracking how you did. And the winners went to, um, I, I didn't win, but, uh, the winners went and did like a field trip to the stock exchange, which was pretty cool and like high stakes. Um, so that stands out to me. I also want to give a shout out to like Mary Mellow, who was my kindergarten teacher, who was like the most quintessential perfect like vision of a kindergarten teacher that you can imagine, and she, I still remember my room here, like that's how much it like imprinted on my memory, and then my daughter ended up having her as her kindergarten teacher. It was just like this beautiful full circle moment um, for all of us. And I also wanted to give a shout out to Karen McAden, who was, uh, like, one of these like new young teachers that came in in the nineties.
You had Karen?
Yes. She was, she was not even that much older than me, like when I
Don't lie about it, sure.
Um, but yeah, she had a lot of energy and she chose really great, uh, relevant reading material for, um, for us teenagers. And she did this one thing that I still remember where I'm like, you know, and when I went through my teacher training, I was like, she's a genius, like, we all thought we were getting away. She said that for tests, she would allow us to, one index card. Anything that you wanted to write on it, you could write on it, but it was like, you know, that's you writing the stuff on it is you actually studying for the test and remembering the stuff that's written on it, and then in the end, you don't actually need the index card, but I was like, you know, we all thought, ooh, we're really getting away with something here. We get to like cheat on the test and bring our index card in, and actually it's just her way of getting us to study for tests. Anyway.
I'll be, I'll be quick. Yeah, I'm the same. I, I, this, I don't think there are words to describe what we've all been going through and gone through, especially coming off COVID to then go right into this, I just I'm sort of seeing it through the eyes of my teenage daughter, and they're somehow the most resilient crew. They just lost their jobs, their hangouts, they finally get to hang out together, and then they have to hang out differently, and they somehow figure it out, and it's pretty impressive, um. The things that instantly came to mind were like a couple of specific teachers, like I don't, like, a lot of school is sort of a blur. But I had one teacher my freshman year in high school, my first like high school English class, and he was this massive wrestling coach, football coach, teacher who was our English teacher, and he got us super excited about available, like he was so into it, and it was like that that resonated because like I'm, my happy place is reading a book, like I'm, I, that's my place. And that like really solidified that for me, and like that books could be everything and were like the path to everything. And then in college, I had a very similar teacher who was very non-traditional, this old guy who'd been like a reporter for the Post and like had all these great inside stories about journalism, and so I ended up getting my degrees in English and journalism. And I think it's because of those two teachers and their, their passion for it.
Even available.
Um, yeah, very similar, uh, sentiments to what y'all have shared. Um, there, the one word that, that has come up over and over again is existential. Um, a lot of people I work with, a lot of people I'm, you know, friends with, um, have really, yeah, been dealing with, with pain, um, and it's, it's not gonna end. Um, and I'm I think you mentioned in email earlier, you know, like I'm privileged enough to like I live off the hill, I'm even higher than you, so, um, other than some pump that get, got plugged and I got a little dirty, like I managed to be pretty much outskied, so there's this like, yeah, survivor's guilt, I don't know what the, the right expression is, um, for that. Um, I've pretty much spent my entire life in school. Um, my mom was a, was a high school biology teacher for forty-four years. Um, and I remember when I was like a child, spending like days in class with her. Um, actually, I was just at her house recently, um, helping clean out some stuff, and we found pictures from like one of the first years she was a teacher, and, and I was like, I remember that classroom. Um, yeah, so it's crazy that my, the first memory I have and the most vivid, uh, memory I have of, of school is actually not being in school. Uh, my senior year of high school, um, the last quarter of the year, I, instead of going to school, um, I worked at the Bronson, uh, in the reptile house. Um, it was like an alternative, um, program that, that most of the people in my, in my senior year did, they just, they got to do something, an internship of something that, that they're interested in, so, yeah. I commuted to the Bronx and was the Bronson.
Did you go to a Ted Sizer's school?
Uh,
Was it called Ted Sizer? No.
No, no, I went to some regular public schools. No, no, I went to some regular public schools.
Was it a P S, something?
No, no, it's Bexister County, so, um, up, upstate, um, but yeah, hey. I got to work in the nursery with like the baby Chinese alligators. When the, the keeper, it was like, here, put these, these safety goggles on.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Erin, for sharing. Um, we're, just to do a quick recap of how we got here, um, and how, you know, where we're at in the process. Um, we had the almost year-long visioning, um. Input gathering process facilitated by Nathan Suter of Built Strategies and, and the steering committee of. Community members, teachers, uh, administrators, a couple of board members. And, um, that culminated in the, the summary and report that Nathan put together for us and I. Think had to us by last fall, so almost a year ago now. Um, that shared what our community said is the overarching vision of, um. What we want for our graduates and, um, from that. The board has done some work to narrow that down into these three priorities of, um, closing the achievement gap. Uh, which is to focus on academics, um, safety, belonging and wellness and, um, community. Communication and engagement. So those are our, our, the three priorities that the board has gleaned from the visioning work that. Um, happened throughout our community and. We're today taking those very broad themed priorities and making them a little bit more specific. Um, so the question that we wanna, before we dive into actually doing that, that we want to get clear on as a board is. How specific do we want those to read? Um, so that's, uh, we're gonna spend the next few minutes talking and deciding that together before we move into, um. The, uh, actual work of kind of writing them, so, um. First, as any facilitator has a. I dumb this up out of my face from back in the day when I used to do in-person facilitation and I got, um. A chuckle out of my kids during COVID, used these big pieces of paper as something that to occupy themselves while I probably needed to be on a Zoom call. And I found this, this was on the first top sheet and, and I don't, it was probably Oliver, who now is nine, but at the time was more like. Six, tried to remember the school, the Union Elementary Guidelines of Being Safe, Kind. And this might be gentle, but then there's also love in there. So anyway, I could not throw that away. I had to bring that in, cause it's. It's a good, it's adorable and a good reminder of what we're all here to do, which is.
Your kids are much lovelier kids than my kids. I had, mine made a square jar for those. And well, and it said on the bottom, superintendent's especially. So that's much nicer than my children.
Mine were still holding on to the warm fuzzy feeling, anyway. So that was the top sheet. This is what I did for the next sheet, which is just to give us a couple of examples of what they might look like, um. Uh, before, um, well, I think it was early July, Jill, Scott and I actually managed to find a time and get together and do a little prep. With the first priority and we, um, wrote what we are calling sort of how. We define the first priority of closing the achievement gap and then we got into some very specific. Kind of like into the details, nitty gritty. So I just pulled these out of that as an example of what. Abroad, this could be our indicator of success. We could just stop here and say, this is what success looks like to us. We could also go to the level of getting to a more like nitty gritty detail level, so. I only pulled these out as a way of just giving us something to picture for this conversation, to answer this question of how, how. Broad or specific do we want these indicators to read? So with that. Pass it out to you. Oh yeah, sorry, I'm sitting.
I can talk about community and communication, community engagement. So, we had a lot of phone conversations, that's what we were able to do and the events of the last few weeks did not help. Um, but. So, one of the thoughts that we had was. Um, to come up with a measurable goal that we may be able to actually measure. Was to use the summary tool that you created with Anna, which I think is fantastic, um. To see if we can basically put a button on the tool that people click. Um, see how much people are using it and, and then set a goal to increase the engagement with the summary tool. Um, by some number, ten percent over the course of a year, fifteen percent over the course of a year. I don't know, one of my thoughts was to put a, to put a question like, do you approve of the board's work for this meeting? Yes, no. And then we're measuring clicks, not the yes, no. We, of course, are very, we want to see a yes answer to that question, but. Just the number of people that respond to a question like that, I don't, and, and the other piece of, um. The community engagement goal, it, it, it kind of brings me back to that title one policy that came out where. There's only so much the board can do, in a sense, there's a lot that. The administration can do, there's a lot that building principles will do and, and thinking about how the board can kind of accumulate. The data that comes from all these different levels of engagement that are, that are already happening. There's a lot of engagement that happens. The board can't necessarily. You know, facilitate all of that, nor should it, but all of that engagement is part of the district's goal of. Engaging families and getting engagement with families to be. Where our community wants it to be, which, you know, I think we, we, we do a good job of it. I think that coming out of the pandemic. It's a lot of growth that's been happening, um, so I don't know if that's, you know. Sort of the goal, school board meeting summaries will have a fifteen percent increase in independent views from the sometime. Uh, as measured by responses to school board meeting summaries, views of school board meeting summaries will be measured by a button that asks, do you approve of the work of the board for the. That meeting. I don't know if that's a good approach, um, but to come up with something measurable. Is challenging. But that would be data, that would be hard data, that would be measurable. I don't know if that meets the. Inclusive or equitable aspects of the smarty goals, um, I wasn't sure exactly how to link that in. The other thing that we discussed was. Figure out ways to. Make sure that. Board activities. Are less in the work day and that helps engagement from the community. It's hard to do things from eight to four. Um, and a lot of work is done from eight to four and I don't. You know, everything's warned. Those are tough times to engage the community. Um, that's why our meetings are six thirty. Um, that's kind of what we have, not a lot.
So it sounds like you want more to the specific.
Kind of, I thought how, how can we make this measurable? It's really tough to gauge how successful we are. Um, in our community outreach and I don't know if that's, that's a good approach. I don't know if that's the right question to ask or if it even should be a question, maybe it's. Click if you receive this, you know, it could be anything.
And the getting more like, this is not just wordsmithing it, but working and refining it, that's what we're gonna do further into this meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, we're right now just trying to decide, so that gives us some guidance, like shouldn't we be going that specific or do we want to stay more broad? So that's what the conversation is right now, for the others then, should we get to that level of specificity or stay more, more broad?
My thought for the indicators is this relatively broad and then I think we can set for a couple of reasons. One, I think. We can set goals in the next meeting for like shorter term timeframes that are a little more specific about like. See maybe the next two to three years on something like, you know, taking your example, you have every student reading their highest potential in terms of. You know, reading and literacy and then we can maybe set a couple of year goals so that way. As, as what we feel meets that indicator in twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six. I think the other reason is specific indicators tend to slap towards things that we can quantify. And I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of things we want to try, cause if, if you slap towards things that you. Can quantify, those tend to be the things you look for and kind of like in the behavioral realm, it's a lot easier to quantify. The acting out behaviors, you know, how many reports we have of bullying, how many things we have on the dashboard, it's a lot harder to find. For instance, the high achieving student who's suffering from anxiety and depression and types of really well, um. And some of those, you know, other indicators that I think we really want to pay attention to that are harder to find and harder to quantify. And if we have, if we slant towards things that we can quantify. I'm afraid that that's gonna be what we look at and we say, oh, you know, or, you know, no one's acting out in class. Everyone, behavior is great, everyone's, everyone's feeling, feeling good and belonging and that might not be the case.
Um, so I'm just as, as per usual, getting a little mixed up with, um. So the way that Jim was just talking about indicators and goals, it almost seemed like he had them flipped from what you have listed here, which is. Indicators are more evergreen, goals have a terminus and I thought I was hearing Jim do it in the reverse.
No, I was saying the, the indicator is evergreen and it's something that we want to be constant. And then with our goals, we can kind of look to the indicator and kind of like, well, what, what goal would give us. An idea, say for next year that we're, we're, we're getting towards this evergreen indicator or we're.
And your suggestion is to work on the broader, more evergreen indicator.
Yeah.
This meeting and then work on the more specific goals. Next meeting.
Did I flip it or no?
No, I, I don't.
I agree with that. I think it makes sense starting with the broader, more evergreen goal and then working into the details.
Yeah, I, I agree and, um, I like your point, Jim, about, um, quantitative. Um, not only looking at quantitative data to inform. Um, there are very effective ways of capturing qualitative, um. I'm not a qualitative researcher and so I don't know how, but there, there are ways to do that. And, and I think what you're saying is important to keep in mind and. Include those qualitative measures as well as quantitative, cause they're, they're equally as important, cause they show different things.
Yeah, what came up for me is the, uh, I think it was a TED Talk of the, the danger of a single story, that like. You know, quantitative data can give you one story, but then there's this whole missing piece and I do think. You know, we've gotten a, a mix of types of data, you know, we're now getting data out of the kind of data apparatus. But when I think about student presentations that we get, I feel like that's where we feel like a lot of the qualitative piece, we're seeing kind of the. You know, the pedagogy sort of roll out before us and see what kids are experiencing. So I think, you know, when we think about methods for getting. Uh, the qualitative feedback of how well our district is doing, it's those kind of presentations, like I think, you know, we've been at, what do you all want to see? What do you want to hear? And not only data, but I think the presentations from different programs and getting students in the room, I know the article. That was sent around, it's like, how are our students doing? The best way for us to know that is to ask them and to hear from them. So kind of how we weave in those, you know, presentations to the board that also really includes students. Um, so, I like the idea, I think it makes sense to have indicators broad and then, but I do think, you know, and I think we've been striving to. Uh, you know, get to this place, but having that quantitative piece in there also. Um, and I think it would also be helpful, I think setting that, those quantitative bars will also be. Um, we're gonna need to rely on some baseline data, you know, if we want to see a thirty percent, you know, improvement, you know, then we probably want to know. Where is our current baseline? So working with Libby and Mike and whomever else from, you know, from leadership to help us kind of. Make sure that what we're asking is, um, is just informed, you know, by what the, what the current data is, so. Sounds like we could probably move into broad indicator land.
Yeah, I, I am okay with that and I agree that indicators should be evergreen. I think the one thing that I disagree with Jim on a little bit is that. Um, I think it's possible to be evergreen and specific, but I'm also okay being overruled.
Yeah.
This is a, this is a team of people working together, so. Anyway.
I think, I agree with that.
And I agree with that too.
So, um, one other thing that when Jim was speaking was like, uh, uh, and I think behavior is a good, um. A good example of this, that it can tend to sort of operate, like the data collection can tend to operate on like a deficit model.
Yeah.
Where it's like, I'm, I'm, I'm going into the system to report in bad behavior.
Right, yeah.
And so I think it would be nice to sort of be thinking about how do we avoid that, that pitfall, like how do we, how can we build in. Ways to track positive, um, progress also. And also keep in mind other variety of stakeholders, so not just like, you know. Well, with academic achievement, you know, not just one indicator, but also these other qualitative measures, so not just like. S VACs or whatever they're called now. Right, Cognia or, or STAR, you know, Renaissance testing, you know, not just one, but like a variety.
Right.
Um, so, and that we're hearing from a variety of stakeholders, because parents feel differently than their. Students, than the teachers, than the testing, you know, it's like cross-referencing stakeholder input.
Yeah. So it sounds like we're gonna go more broad with the indicator and get to the specificity when it comes to goal setting time. Okay. So, that's the plan for today. Let's, we're gonna, um, start by breaking up into small groups, the same ones that did the, we're starting out in the, um. Same ones that we, that were sort of our prep groups, so for closing the achievement gap, that's me, Scott and Jill. Uh, for belonging, safety and wellness, that's Jim, Emma and Kristen and communications and. Community engagement, uh-oh, that's just.
Or can we shift some?
Yeah, Libby, I would love to have Libby float to give her expertise to each group, so why don't I join Brett? And then Scott and Jill, the two of you can do any more work if you want to refine the one that we worked on when we were.
Is there a document in here that we should be working from that has all of our different graph?
There is the one that, um, has probably the, captured the most of the like. Work since we've set the vision is the, I think, Emma, yes, vision approach values. That one has, yeah, that one has, um. Yeah, there's not much in there, the, that's the one that we're gonna put what we write today. I mean, you could work in that one, I think, if it's, uh, editable, which we can make it editable. The one that I was gonna point your attention to for information on. Information on conversations that have happened up to this point is the one that's that's titled draft priorities, questions and indicators. So we'll break up into those small groups. We'll have about um, get my. Agenda here, um, twenty minutes to get a draft written down. And then we'll come back to the big group to present that. The um whole group will offer suggestions or questions and then when we break into small groups, there'll be slightly different small groups the second time around. So that it's different perspectives looking at the same words. So, but we'll get to that after the bigger. For now, you go to. Scott and Jill, Jim, Emma and Kristen and Rhett and I, working on our different priorities.
How long?
For twenty minutes.
Uh, can you forward that email? I was just, I'm trying to find it, but it's buried. Um, there was an email that you had sent us with um. The SBA sort of suggest suggestions.
Oh, sure, I will find that.
And I would like to use that as a starting point, but I couldn't find it.
So that one had, that was from Sue, I think.
So sorry, and. So the the document, the draft priorities, questions and indicators, is that one of the things that that the three of us came up with?
Uh, no, because I couldn't edit that one at the time. The one that we were, we came up with is in, is actually in the minutes from our meeting. So I can.
Thank you.
And it's also, so that's the minute, the meeting that was six twenty seven, twenty three. I think you can find it on the school board website. Or our page of the website. And then.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, I got it's in the packet too for today.
Okay, so. Emma, Kristen and Jim, why don't you take that corner of the table? And by the end of these twenty minutes, so about nine forty, ideally, you've got something either written down on paper or typed in. You can open a brand new Google Doc if you need to, don't worry about that. Typed up that then can be shared with the big group. So ideally written down so we can like. Um, put it up there. I have more of the big sheets if you want them. And um, it doesn't have to be the final product. That's the whole idea of today is we're gonna iterate on this for the next few hours, so. Yeah. Thank you.
We've got. Do this.
So we have.
We think, I mean, I've been thinking about it and sort of like the odds.
It sounds like perhaps. I may let myself change. I miss what what was the discussion about the difference and so here these. These seem like short term versus.
Cuz I don't think we wanna not, I mean, I think I liked what we took with cuz it's like, like Christmas thing, it's based on. A starting point, so that's something you can actually measure and aspire to. So I don't think they would go away, right? I mean, aren't we always gonna?
I think I might have started in the wrong direction because we're we're not supposed to be looking at. We we, I think what I heard in this discussion was we're gonna start broad for this next twenty minutes. And and then I went right to the narrow or the specific, so that's my bad. And if I remember correctly, we. This definition from our meeting was what we, the three of us defined as, so the the we were tasked with. Coming up with a goal. Sorry, an indicator of closing the achievement gap. And our indicator is that every student is reaching their highest potential. So then, if that's the case, what are we?
I'm I'm really glad I did for some time because for some reason I thought we'd have some here and maybe. So this is a goal, right? That every, the goal is every student is reaching their highest potential. And an indicator of the success would be. Bumbling. So we had come up with the definition of what it means to close the achievement gap is like our goal, right? So every student reaching their highest potential regardless of identity or socioeconomic status. And that they have equitable access to the opportunities they need and desire to succeed.
The first part of that. So every student is reaching their highest potential. Who gets to decide that? We don't need to knowing adults, they decide it. And so that is a biased. So that would be my only, my only question.
Do you have a different way to frame that or?
So what we're, what we as a leadership team use consistently is every student has any choice available to them on graduation. I mean, that is kind of. Like it kind of, what's the garbles out of your mouth, but. But it's the idea that. You wanna go for your school, you're gonna have skills to do it. You wanna travel the world for a year. Any choices available to them, so. Like we did a a big, big thing at our leadership retreat around that, like. Okay, so let's see, say a kid wants to go for your school, say a kid wants to go to technical school. Say a kid wants to split up into groups, we found things like, well, every kid needs financial literacy and any choice that make. Why is that not a graduation? Like, so it was enabling us to open up those. Four year college should be a choice for any student. Then algebra two and multilingual, some sort of language is necessarily, are those. You know, like, are we there? So then those become the indicators. Help us define what those things are, so. While the, we haven't figured out a. Say that idea, but that's what we're going through. And any child has the confidence and skills necessary. So it takes the, that takes the ownership out of us child.
So, do we need to write this as? So it's a goal as when they read. Which is not the same as like a goal. Each year they're getting.
But you need, so, so if you want that back, that means we have to define what high levels of learning needs, right? Like, so. Um, at the high school level, it means that everybody had some sort of writing and reading proficiency. Usually around at the tenth grade level. So they can write. And that's all like ten and eleven grade English kind of skills, but we can name those better, right? Um, the third grade piece is an indicator for literacy at the elementary. We don't wanna be, have that be our only. Piece because that lets off a major component of our of our school district, right? Certainly is an influencing factor according to research and so it's ninth grade. So what kind of ninth grade indicators do we have? Right, that every. Particularly.
Yeah, does, do you or the, does your leadership team have something for the ninth grade that you?
No, that's what we have to get more specific about, right? That's getting more specific, right? Um, but that also gets under the quality. They belong in the culture. How do they feel in terms of expectations for themselves to learn or how to? And how are they doing in my ninth grade? What are we ordering them to do?
We did have one of our possible indicators be about um percentage of students who report their teachers and administrators have high expectations of them.
My first reaction to it is, well, that's the, that's the leadership team's first to make those specific goals, right? And at the same time, you all need that, you all need. Yeah, so I go back and forth, like, how to, how specific that should be.
Yeah, I mean, I. I would hope that. Whenever we decide, it's in alignment with what what the leadership team is saying. And if not, that's where the like, it's a hard conversation. And at this point, we're not focusing on the specific, right? So I'm listening to what you're saying and I'm trying to translate that to like a very broad. Statement and I really like one thing you said. There are a number of things in there and I'm trying to pull out language to to be in like high level goal and you said something like every student has the confidence and skills. To make the choice and then that's a piece and I'm trying to. Make make what choice?
So, so if you think of choices that. The choice I don't want kids to make is that they're gonna go work in. And the skills to say, that's not good enough, but I want to really work in the trades, so I know that I. You know, I need to be an apprentice, what, you know, I need to have customer service experience. Um, I'm making that choice and I have the skills and confidence to be able to go get that with me. And I also want any child to be able to go to a four year college, should that be a choice. It could be any four year school, but there are. Be able to read a long text, you know, like at the most basic kind of thing, you have to. Be able to stomach, you know, five to six. Literally, like if you think about like first word over four year college, like you're reading things at a time.
Well, like the electrician, you know, the those kids, they have to do apprentice, they have to read these huge technical. Yep, they have to take tests on those, they, yeah. They have to know how to do their own budget if they're gonna do this as, yeah.
So whichever choice they make. My bottom line would be that that choice is one that leads to some sort of learning, more learning in the future. That they have the ability to be able to do that, that they can support themselves eventually and they can benefit more. So, so what is that? You know, those are choices, those are choices.
So is that different than closing the achievement gap? They're kind of different beasts. I mean, they're, they're the same thing, but.
So another way you could look at it is that you, that at MRPS, um, student outcomes are not. Are not predicted by identifying factors such as. Race, ethnicity, all the kind of typical ones that we look at. Um, that's another way to look at it and that's more of an educational equity lens. Yeah, so. You know, student outcomes cannot be predicted based on identifying factors. Which gets at opportunity gaps.
And they have. Access to the opportunities they need. Desire, I thought we took that out. Um, they need to succeed beyond graduation or something like that.
Cuz right now, you can pick and identify, like. That is a. That's a predictor of success in our district right now, for lack thereof. So that's just another way to look at it.
Interesting, like Nathan's report, that was. That was part of the question.
It seems to me that it's the opposite. Right, socioeconomic status and identity should not be predictors of. Success or are not, yeah, would be our goal, yeah.
I mean, there's, they're both similar. I mean, I can read to what the leadership. But it's like, you have about three more minutes with its longer. And we don't have to have a final grass tool.
I think we're going fast.
It is, yes. Now we can do that, right? MRPS features every student experiences a deep sense of belonging, discovers relevance and envisions limitless futures, enabling them to rise above their biggest dreams. Through commitment to excellence, collaboration, empowering partnerships, cultivating an environment where students thrive academically, socially and emotionally. Equipping them to excel in an ever evolving world and make a lasting positive impact on society. So it's kind of like an.
Yeah, that, all the rest of you sit under that.
Certainly together. That's what we came up with. Do we wanna do? Harp on a little bit.
Did you guys then get into like measures of that? We had a measure for. Third grade, we had a measure for high expectations. Students who close their um achievement gap and move out of special education services. Oh, chronic absenteeism.
By nature and by limits to.
Is there a way to measure or like talk to kids a year after they grow, like, is there like a?
You know.
Yeah. And when you're eighteen, you may not necessarily have locked down on a path. Cause that would help sort of quantify, did we did we set them up that they do they feel like they have the tools they need or do they? Have a plan or I don't know, some sort of.
Emotionally safe, is that what you're saying, recommending?
So, all right, Emma and Kristen.
Emma and Kristen, yeah, it doesn't have to be a final draft, but I do have to cut you off.
Okay, that means a good conversation is happening.
Exactly, and I'm sorry to stop it.
It's okay.
But you can come back to it, thank you, it's not forever. Wrong, definitely. All right, so here we're gonna do brief presentations from each small group, just to put out there what you got so far. And then the board, if there's any like small suggestions or questions that will help prompt thinking for the next small group. So we've got three minutes to just say out loud what you've got so far and then seven for questions and feedback. And we'll start with our academic achievement gap. Friends, I'm gonna also try and write it really big here so that it's.
Yeah, and then you can.
On the wall and easy to see.
Can we put the draft into the MRPS vision approach values priorities draft? Does that make sense?
So that everybody.
Can everyone edit that one?
Yeah. Sure. And I mean, I can't spell the word achievement. The I before E gets me every time. Um, and is that one that I think that one was in the board packet, so it is a public document, anybody can see it too.
Yeah, the only thing is that in the board packet, I believe it's a PDF, so I don't know.
So people can't watch us do it in real time, but we put it updated, okay? Okay. So. But a board members wanna access the the link in the agenda, I believe goes to the.
Yeah.
Board document.
And I see a bunch of us in there.
So Scott and Jill are you able to drop in the draft that you've got into the mission vision of MRPS? That's okay, that's okay. We want, that's what we want right now.
The mission vision one, not the draft priorities, questions and.
Correct, we want the one that's vision, approach, values, priorities. That's where we want you to put it.
And it would be under the priorities and indicators of progress of that section.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to like both figure that out and report out to you guys. All right, well, can I start by reading it and then maybe meanwhile I'll try to figure out now I can't even figure out where I. Here we go. Okay. So our group was um originally was Mia, Scott and myself and um today we had myself, Scott and Letty helped us with this as well. So our draft from pre flood, um, we wanted to just sort of define and 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 set the goal for what it means to close the achievement gap. So we had written out every student is reaching their highest potential regardless of identity or socioeconomic status. And they have equitable access to the opportunities they need and desire to succeed. So Libby was helping us reframe sort of rather than every student is reaching their highest potential, which is still sort of a measure and 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 biased towards the adults setting that. But rather that the students leave equipped and reflecting that they are equipped for whatever opportunities they want to pursue afterwards. So we're working on framing that. Um, we had, we had started to draft some indicators when we got together last month about um. There's a couple of sort of key touchstones in third grade and ninth grade, it sounds like of when you sort of wanna take that. Temperature on how um. How students are doing, cause that can really help be a future predictor, so. Um, as you articulated here, one of our first ones was ninety percent of all third graders, regardless of identity or socioeconomic status. And the year able to read at or above grade level. Um, we do wanna set a similar indicator for ninth grade, it sounds like ninth grade is a very important year transitionally, academically um and social emotionally for students. So um maybe we'll be drafting a specific indicator for ninth grade as well. Um, we had also uh identified, especially following our presentations recently about absenteeism. That ten percent of all students, regardless of identity or socioeconomic status, are chronically absent from school. Um, ninety percent of students, regardless of identity or socioeconomic status, report that their teachers and administrators have high expectations of them. Um, we also were trying to articulate a um a measure of students who are closing their individual gap and can actually move out of special education services. Um, and then we were, we were working on how do we um. Measure or how do we provide and guarantee that students have options while they're here that will prepare them for whatever choice they make out after graduation? Um, so you know, regardless of what students want to pursue and they graduate, there's sort of some standard skill sets that everyone needs. And then we wanna make sure that students leave feeling like, yes, I have the the skill set and the opportunities I need to pursue whatever that path is after graduation. So a way to measure that might be like the week of senior year, the final week of senior year, checking in with those kids. Cause once they leave, it's really hard to sort of get any sort of quantifiable data about did we do, how we do, but like what their plans are, what they feel they're equipped to do. To navigate whatever that next chapter is. Um, the leadership team has obvious has also been working on sort of their vision for their their work and um use the term limitless futures. So basically, can we set up our students for success, all students? Um. For success and whatever they pursue. And so we were also sort of trying to articulate how to say student outcomes can't be predicted based on socioeconomic factors. Right, that it's not about um continuing to sort of. Put those parameters in place, but rather that those out those socioeconomic factors that we all know and understand. Do not predict a student's future and their outcomes when they graduate. Did you have anything else you want to?
Um, so what I tried to do while Jill was talking was wordsmith that fall into two sentences. And it's not perfect, but um but this is and Jill hasn't seen this yet, so um this is just me going rogue. Um, so I took what Mia, Jill and I had originally um crafted and then the the thinking from um. The 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 thinking that we had based on feedback from. From Libby and and came up with, and I can't act, I can't edit the draft um priorities document, so I just requested access, otherwise I would paste it in, so I'm gonna read it. Do you want me to read it?
Sure, go for it.
So um and again, this is a first stab at at summarizing what Jill said. Um, every student has the confidence and skills to choose a limitless path that leads to their continued learning, benefiting themselves and their community. The identity and socioeconomic status of MRPS students are not predictive of academic success. All students shall have equitable access to the opportunities they need and desire to succeed.
Sure. That's, well, and Scott, you. Do have edited answers. Um, vision, approach, values, priorities and draft?
Oh, I'm on draft priorities, questions and.
Oh, okay, yep.
Oh, there we go, that was on the wrong draft.
There are a lot of documents. That's.
All right, so I will put this.
Totally.
Statement that I just read.
You scroll down to the bottom of the first page, there's priorities and indicators of progress. I'm gonna get rid of what's currently there and then you can put what you just read out loud. Yep. Great. Thank you. And then I'll just note that some of those specific ones that Jill mentioned from our pre-work session, those. We maybe would continue to include those in a broad definition of an indicator of success, or maybe we reserve those for goals. That would be good work for the next small group to figure out like, maybe we pull out a couple of those because they are, like we've said. Such milestones in a student's career. Or maybe we leave this broad and we keep those for goals, so that's a good. Conversation for our next, the next people who are gonna work on this in the next small group round.
Yeah, I definitely, I definitely hear what Jim is saying, that if we set measures, then maybe that's all we're looking at, but I also don't think we wanna not look at what we do have.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And then some things like, I mean, I think like. I don't think we should be too restrained in our thinking. Some things like academics, quantitative data is very helpful. Uh, you know, social, financial wellness, it's there, it's a little more strong.
Right, I'm I'm thinking of the absenteeism thing specifically, cause I think the point that was made that really stuck with me was if the student is not here. They're not getting the food, they're not getting the social, they're not coming to school. It sort of, it it's the, it's the tie that allows them access to all that.
And that's, that's better one, they're either, you're either not.
Uh, all right, we, let's move on to, so we have a a rough draft, great, thanks team. Let's move on to group two was belonging, safety and wellness. What's your rough draft?
Okay, so belonging, safety and wellness team currently is Emma Gemini and um. We had a definition in paragraph format and then we kind of broke these up into individual uh indicators. So it reads, um, all student staff and families, caregivers feel welcomed in our schools and valued for the unique history, identity and beliefs that they bring to the school community. The environment, systems and opportunities that foster student and staff wellness are present, successful and thriving in our schools. Uh, student staff and family's caregivers feel physically, emotionally safe while having a strong sense of belonging and health, healthy connections with those in their school buildings. And this was new and it's rough and unfinished, but that resources are available to staff, students, families, caregivers that enable them to access their education. Um, I think something that we were still wrangling with is which of these apply to student staff, families and or caregivers and what what. Um, terminology are we using when it comes to families and caregivers um and. Um. And then we also, you know, talked a bit about just um. From these indicators, the goals within and just how we are able to access the quantitative piece and how. We can lean on kind of what is already existing kind of within the data apparatus, but also not wanting to like. Unnecessarily tax the data machine and the data collecting responsibilities of teachers, leadership administration. But certainly, um, you know, wanting to ask for things if they are truly important in route, like not, not asking for something just because it might be hard or, you know, require a new, you know, system or or way of collecting data. But that we just wanna be mindful of of what we're asking and make sure that it it's truly important. Um, and valuable. Um. And that's uh, yeah, that, so this is what we considered indicators, not moving into kind of measurable quantitative goals and kind of, you know, asking for um. Presentations and things like that. So I think that's, yeah, I think that's what I have to say.
And the initial thoughts or questions on the second priority and the indicators test part? I like in the second, in the first sentence of value for the unique history, identity and beliefs that they bring to the school community, I like the way you phrase that. All right. So we'll. We'll move on to group three, thanks group two. Um, Joe, no?
Um, we. Went backwards from what I talked about, which was that metric to measure engagement to why? Why is this important? And so um. We thought it's important because we need to hear from the community in order to make good decisions as a board. Therefore, success looks like a broad and diverse group of stakeholders who contribute to the school community and the decisions of the board. And the board maintains a communication loop with the community about its decisions. And then we're kind of.
Can you hear, okay, Jim?
I can hear. Do you see it?
It's.
I can see this, yeah, to the diagram, I can see it.
He he just read it out loud so far, that's all we're at.
Yeah, I mean. That's why, that's the hope. We talked about. The sort of. Different stakeholders in the community, because it's one thing to communicate with families that have children in the district, it's another thing to communicate with folks who don't. On how does that look and how do we, you know, sort of, how are we keeping that in mind? Um, we talked about passing the budget, but. Figuring out how to gauge whether we're communicating well with. Families or community members who don't have kids in the system in the district is. Another part of our work. Um, and so that. We wanted to kind of. Speak to that, that objective.
So this, this touches on a question that I had very early on in this process of like, are we writing these? For the board specifically or are we writing it for the district? And so the other two seem to read more like for the whole school, the district, all of us. Um, like for example, the second one, belonging, safety and wellness, this isn't about the board specifically, like do people feel welcomed and well? Like members of the board and people who interact with the board. It's written more for student staff and families and caregivers and all of us. Um, and so then this last one now, the way that's drafted. Is very board centric and and I see, I mean, like evidenced by what Libby is doing right now with the flood information. It's like, community engagement is so valued and important for the whole school, from the whole school community. And right down to things like we've been hearing a lot from the community around um, you know, wanting more information about their individual students' academic achievements and stuff like that, struggles. So like, I was thinking about it more in terms of that type of like broader school community and not just the the work of the board.
Yeah, I kind of think of it as a yes and, right, if you use that expression. Um, and this came up when we were talking with Libby about about um the indicator of of closing the academic gap, like. Our goals and the goals of the leadership team should be aligned, right? And if they're not, that's when the conversation, you know, should be happening. And so I feel like this should should, whatever we decide on, should be be reflective of what we as a board. Think is important, but should not be. It it should be in alignment and and parallel to every level within the district, whether you talk about it, a teacher or or a leadership team.
Anyone could accomplish this.
Yeah.
Indicator of success.
Yeah.
Do, uh, what are other thoughts on that?
I agree with the with the yes, with the yes and that it should be, it should be both. We're talking about kind of broader community engagement, you know, in terms of the board and really kind of taking that. That role, um. You know, seriously and prioritizing that as this sort of, you know, all the VSA materials that we like, this is a primary function of a board is to be that conduit.
Yes.
You know, so really having that be centralized here, but also the 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 school based piece also. Um, you know, that parents do want to feel welcome in the schools, they do want to know and understand what their um students are uh learning and what the expectations are. And they do want access to um to data and test scores and that there are systems in place to regularly communicate those those things to families and caregivers.
Great, well, that's good input for the the next small group that works on this one, just to figure out how to weave that in and have it not be solely. Um, centered around board and board responsibilities. Yeah, good. Any other thoughts on what we've got so far in these drafts before we take a quick break?
It was very efficient and effective to break into smaller groups before this, so this much work at our event, huh?
Yeah.
I'm gonna give most of that credit to the system, cause we were not able to break in this. A small group of one.
All right, well, why don't we take a quick break, let's get back here at supposed to be like five minutes, get water, use the bathroom. Yeah, so be back in here at about ten oh five. And we'll get into different small groups at that point. Bring our attention back to the word of hand, we're gonna break into slightly different small groups as we were talking about during the break. We are gonna, we have one person staying in place with their priorities so to maintain some bit of continuity. Um, from the conversation before and then bringing in new people to offer those new perspectives, which can um and that freshness that can really help refine a draft. So this time around, working on closing the achievement gap is Scott, Emma and Kristen. And working on belonging. And working on belonging, safety and wellness is Jim and Rhett, and working on communication and community engagement is me and Jill. So, ready?
Oh, yes, questions? So are we still trying to stay very broad?
Okay, but as we noted in the conversation after the presentation of the first priority, there may be some usefulness to getting more specific in the academic one. Um, but that's a good thing for the three of you to discuss, okay? Yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Ralph, do you want to go over to you?
Okay, so you're
And we have another, we have twenty minutes for this as well.
Yeah, my timer.
Yes, do this safely.
So we can all go on.
And we can get through this without any injury.
Let's go.
All right.
Welcome to the closing achievement gap.
That this uh, the way it's worded right now is very I'm like to leave anybody in the district.
Anybody in the district, including the board, right?
Anyway, I digress, but If you're not in academic realm, this is
And then the final one.
Opportunity gap, I think.
I think that comes to mind when I think about community engagement and accountability.
So the I think the board's role is to host and facilitate that, right? Like we have to model that and provide that opportunity, that's part of the reason why there are like public volunteer select school board members, right? There's a huge part of why that will exist. And then also like create that opportunity with the leader fifteen, um, right? Uh huh, and sort of foster that culture at every level.
Well, I just added that as
Yeah, on a one-on-one teacher to parent, students to parent, students.
Cause I think I
Yeah, like, um, so I I don't want to like
It makes more sense to like
I do think the board has to like
Yeah, but like
Own that and foster that and create those opportunities because that's not where there is.
Yeah, so but at the same time, we are not the ones who are right, like posting open house at the school, for example, like there are we don't want to get outside of our role, no. One of the things I'm coming back to is further up in the document, we have already established under approach, communication engagement. Community for student success. Maybe our why here is that students are more likely to succeed when there is engagement of our whole community and therefore success looks like broad and diverse group of stakeholders contributing to our school, school community. I don't, I I think it makes, I think the place where it kind of breaks down for me a little bit is that I think it makes sense for the community to drop and give input and to right, influence, I guess, decisions at the board level, but then it's like gets a little bit dicey here at the teacher level because yes, we want parents to be engaged, but we I don't think it's necessary or appropriate for parents to be telling a teacher how to teach, we want to leave that up to the so um, to I think the umbrella why for it definitely should center more around student success than around board decisions. But then I think the way we get into what success looks like.
Be the same for all of them?
Yeah, so that's just a little bit
For all of these little bullet points.
No, for all three of our priorities.
That's okay.
Right, that statement that you just said, I think is true for all of them, not just
Right, and so I do feel There's some national
That would be sort of the
Okay.
I'm just trying to find
Where it is, I
The role, the board's role is not linked to like
Right.
In our role, holding meetings and doing forums and things like that, but also to like build that structure or support that structure. In the district, so that it's it's part of the culture, it's like
That we're going to be like
Right, that we are budgeting and we are hiring and we are you know, providing feedback to our superintendent, right?
And show that there are
Let me read it again.
Cause we also need to like
Well, it just starts to feel a little like
You know, have it be a constructive process and protect our staff from, you know, what we see in some other states. Right, micromanagement of
You know
Right, we're the gatekeepers. To build a healthy structure for that community engagement, right?
This is a big one that I've been seeing, it's like middle school is feeling ready for high school. You know what I mean?
So
Of course, high school is feeling ready for
Then I'll then I'll share my next question, which is that um, I think some language in here could be, you know, not necessarily um, a part of decisions at the school level, but but maybe it's more like families and caregivers um report or whatever, that they feel a part of their child's education and or in partnership or in
Maybe measure
Yeah, I think a part of their child's education.
I have a variety of benchmarks, so something like that of um
Change in language, measure, monitor and improve or refine, you know, but that
Maybe, and then the this word, instead of board, we say in the district maintains a communication with the community about its decisions. Because again, then it's not like district is, or also again, makes it more broad. I just forget, wouldn't want to make
I think you're getting tied up in broad and specific.
Almost felt like needed inaster
In
That that the educational journey of a child is
Define that
Community caregivers That's a broad statement. What is it that we value? Yeah, indicators, your your specifics, maybe, but your specifics. You can have a board Yeah, you know, like you can have a
Connected to a thought.
School specific thing, you can have, you know, like that's where you can get
So
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I am because we have this up here as approach already, communication engagement, I don't think we need to rewrite that.
It was very focused on
But so then what I hear you saying, Libby, is that maybe it's like
Like every step of the way through the
Three sentences that are the at the board level, this is what success looks like, at the school level, this is what success looks like, at the classroom.
So to be a bit more inclusive of the entire um, like the range of ages, so every student has the confidence and skills to support their continued growth. Then move into the systems piece that you're talking about, the systems are in place ultimately leading to
Yeah, things I'm not saying
Like ability to choose a limitless path, blah, blah, blah. Um, and so I think, yeah, I think that sort of flows. So it includes all of those students in the district, we have the systems in place, and then that's the the
And the board continue growth like throughout their education.
As they move through, yeah, some, I don't know if I'm right to say it, but yeah.
Along their academic What would it look like at the school level?
Sorry.
In their learning families and caregivers.
All right, I'm gonna put it
Mom, she'll reply. Are
It actually auto filmed.
AI is here.
It's something about both, like they're they're not just physically welcomed into the the building and participating in school activities. They're also, you know
You know, maybe
You know, so there's like the physical, like they're literally, they feel welcomed in the school building, you know, laying down the staff.
Um, I don't know if you want, like, I I don't know the staff. I'm never there, ever. I don't know if you want to put, you know, that kind of thing.
Kind of get the welcome, you know, like
You don't just arrive.
A sense of community or like, how do we say that on a building level?
Yeah, like, yeah, I know, I mean, I just don't want to put things on parents that like yeah, pretty parent involved parent and edited one, and I am never ever in school.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you know.
Is it maybe then it's more like um
So I don't know, to me
At the school level, the
Is the one that
Insight that parents have is welcome, rather than parents to be in the school, I don't know.
That's true.
Um, but the school is at the school level, which to me is like principals. Because then there's the classroom level, maybe we don't have to break it down to all three of these, but maybe school is enough to to cover whole school and particular classroom, but it so, and maybe it really is enough that we say what success looks like is that parents are see themselves at, you know, don't just want to be, but actually could say, yeah, I feel like I am a part of my kid's education. And then like a clear, like, if you wanted to get more specific than that, then it's like two-way communication with teachers or two-way communication with principals or
I was moving away from ensure that all, but it's like almost wording them such that
That might be at the goal level, like maybe for like this year or the next two years.
Right, you know, so
Right, yeah, and the last thing we want to do is frame this in a way that's like, well, if you're not everybody wins or whatever, then you're, you're right. You're you're absolutely right.
So families and caregivers believe themselves to be
if it's even like, maybe this would be more of a survey question, like you'd know where to go, you'd know how to ask for help for your student.
Like in my wordsmithing.
If I needed to, I knew, I know who I could reach out to at the school. That's why, but like that could be a measure of, because maybe you don't need it in that moment.
Full singular, I can't get it down still.
I know how to look on Power School to see if I needed to, or I know how to reach the principal if I needed to, or I know how to reach the guidance counselor if I needed to, that makes me feel very lazy. You know comfortable asking, I need it, but if you don't even know where to go, you're not gonna ask for help.
Yeah, I put that in the like lower down, so right now what we have is success looks like a broad and diverse group of stakeholders who contribute to the school community and the decisions of the board. And the board maintains a communication with the community about its decisions. Success looks like families and caregivers believe themselves to be a part of their children's education. Um, or can
I think it's like the first one because it includes all the people like Rhett was saying, the vast majority of our voters.
So much work and talking around that concept.
Can we communicate with them, do we hear them when they
People may not understand what that means, I like that. When I think of like a very um boiled down definition.
What the title is, I can't find it, but I don't know.
Is she working in the building, guys, the power? Oh, yeah, she's in Wi Fi.
Absolutely, um, so that's where
Our building is still
Wondering
It's been there for months.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, no power in a lot of It was very surreal to reset on my COVID home office.
That's a huge important concept for folks.
So I'm going to
That is like central to the work.
Building level versus classroom level because
Absolutely, and just above it, we have values listed, one of which Our values, which
Yeah, yeah, thank you, okay.
And so that we are doing what you said for equitable, but also for respect and inclusion.
Yeah, there might be a tiny, like, another way to phrase themselves to be I'm trying to get away from this, making it more concrete than just, I'm a parent who wants to be a part of my childhood, but I'm feeling like there's a barrier right now. So that, am I saying, yeah, I believe myself too, so I, and there's maybe some more language you could play with there, we have yeah, five minutes, so we can
That's really funny, so there's there's and it's, yeah, we're still undecided about naming these separately or where they show up and so Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, separately or highlighting. I mean, I think it probably makes sense to
So if you go down to each ten.
I think it's at least worth revisiting because yeah, clearly we're having the same
Yeah. Um, so
Especially this part down here, this orange with the wording here of like students can choose a limitless path. Not the line, it's um
I I think it's, so initially that was part of a sentence, and then and then we took it out and then created its own and
um, families and caregivers
The
Feel connected
Original sentence
Their students learn.
Starting and choose a limitless path, and so the the beginning of that sentence just kind of got thrown together and then wordsmith. I can use some help, I think, for sure.
And should we, in in this last sentence, is are we like focusing on beyond their experience at MRPS? The capabilities of the school system.
You're done twelve.
I think it starts
Also is Yeah, I know, very confusing. Okay, well, over down here.
Capabilities, human capital skills.
Cultural competency about all of that, valuing the connections in the community. And then there's connections here, right, important relationships and networks. Confidence, that's what you guys were just talking about. Leadership team. And then
And I like this, you know, that they need access to knowledge about student learning and the workings of the system and the skills and educational support, like
We're giving And education necessary.
If you go down to the bottom of the next page, Jill, the staff and family partnership outcomes, that's what I'm reading right now.
You know, when you graduate, I think that that's
Yep.
How I'm reading this, one.
Absolutely, and this this piece here that Libby shared with us before putting it here informed that language down below in our in our indicator.
So I'm not sure we want to say that they are gonna have this opportunity boundaries of this books for education because it's, that's not really true. You know what I mean, like there are ways for you to have an alternative journey.
And that really starts to come up at the school.
I'm sure Yeah, this is Has a lot of really good things in it, yeah.
Right, so there's systemic and sustainable things that we as the board want to support.
Choose a reasonable
To empower leadership, coordinate family and school partnerships. Leaders committed to a systemic vision of family engagement, there's lots of things that as a board we would
Yes.
Maybe like students feel empowered.
Seeing that there's language like in here for the indicator itself.
Yeah, I like the, I think we captured, I think that was what I was getting at, that the staff and families have a sense of comfort, resolve, advocacy and these partnerships.
You know what I mean, our garage. What if you take these bullets and made it into a sentence?
Not sure.
School and program staff.
I think that's
Honor and recognize families, funds, honor, and family gave to student learning, great welcoming, inviting for all students, fam- MRPS families um, can negotiate multiple roles as supporters, encouragers, monitors, advocates, decision makers and collaborators for their child's education. You could just steal that wording and make it into two sentences.
Somebody smarter than me, right?
I know.
Funds of knowledge is a very, I don't, I get what that means, but that might be a little, we might want to say like. Yeah, I don't know how to say.
It gets something.
So honors. Either.
Recognize family backgrounds.
Yeah.
And, um. Yeah, and perspectives or something.
Benefiting themselves in their community.
We can let the next group.
Terms like funds of knowledge.
We can make it, yeah.
About too many that's.
All right, so.
What about access? Are graduates who access the one.
Honor and recognize families.
I just, I think I just undid what you did, I think, I think I had, had leading to, and then you changed it to pass that.
That's our time.
Our, our graduate's vision for this future.
Let's see if I can actually.
You know what I mean, so it's.
Sometimes you can't do this for a PDF, but let's see.
But it's sort of like, yeah, you have all these doors are open, there is lots of possibilities for your future. Like just.
Our graduating vision, limitless.
Vision for the school, sure.
Limitless path to their future. Yeah, I like that better.
And number three, I just like, I don't, I'm not crazy about the language I chose there, but I just quickly like finished.
You had said something, maybe a while back when I, about the word collaborator, is that going a little bit farther than we want to go as far as.
Things, there's.
Families and staff.
I think it goes to what you all were saying, that. The challenge I have is somebody's, it doesn't happen to be parents, to people. When somebody.
To their future.
Gives their. Their future pursuits.
Yeah, which is very tricky because there are conflicting opinions.
Right, exactly, exactly. And so, so I think it is collaboration, I think what, one thing that the leadership team worked hard to do this summer. Curiosity. We did a poor, better communication.
I mean, I think something like, you know, I was sitting longer, like, you know, with our.
So, you know, I think that's part of collaboration.
Trying to build that to.
And that kind of thing, not.
We did that.
Or everybody, all of that.
We're going back to what our team has said, and your parent, if you're like trying to come up, trying to gather. Understanding that there are more.
Yeah.
Are they truly advice goals? Is that the right term? Or is it?
No, I mean, maybe to their.
You know, like, so I think we ended up on council, but yes, it was a big conversation.
Okay, so I, I stole a little bit of time from the big group, because we were like, just ready, we just had found some great language, I wanted to make sure I captured it. So, let's bring it back to the big group, though. Um. And this time, we'll do a little, um. Switching up of our presentation, and why don't we have Jim and Rhett go first, belonging, safety and wellness, how's your draft looking?
So we actually thought the work previously was pretty strong, we. But it's dark. Um.
That, I was that into the same place.
Yeah, so, um.
Oh, okay.
So a couple of operations, which I think were the same as before, again. You know, cognizant that this, unlike the academics where I think specifics matters a lot, you know, belonging, wellness and. And safety have a lot to do with how people feel and what their mental state is, and, yeah, so we felt it was okay to do a lot here, it's going to be quantifiable, the idea. That in order to measure this, the school's going to be having to be pretty proactive for a lot of these in terms of, like. Reaching out, checking in, giving people opportunities to, to weigh in and not kind of assuming everyone's fine, like, making sure we have check-ins and. And surveys and, and other things to, you know, to get a sense of, of what the issues are, and also, you know. It's something too where, you know, if ninety-eight percent of people are feeling great and two percent of people are feeling awful, we have a problem. And, yeah, how do we do that? And, and one of the, and, and one of the, Brett and I touched on a little bit more. Um, was your kind of the resources being available, the, you know, the re, the idea that. Even if we have a great environment, there are going to be people who are struggling. And so having the resource be available, and then also, um, making sure that the school community members. Feel that those resources are accessible for them, so just having the resources out there, if people don't know about them. If there's something intimidating about them, if there's something that's hard in terms of access. Um, both literally in terms of access and also just in terms of how people feel about the access, um. That's a problem, so, you know, making sure that, that, that we have those first three indicators, but then making sure that for people who are, um. Who need help, that, that those resources are available for them, and they, they know it, and, and it feels like they have a place to go. I think that's, that's pretty much it. I'm playing Chris's original credit for kind of drafting these up, she did a great job, and it hit on it well, there's not. Not a lot we, we, uh, wanted to change.
So I think maybe just for the benefit of folks who can't see this yet, um, why don't you just read out loud?
So the, for all students, staff, families, caregivers feel welcome to our schools and values of unique history, identity and beliefs that they bring to this community. Be the environment systems and opportunities that foster student and staff wellness in our present, successful and thriving in our schools. Students, staff and families, caregivers feel physically and emotionally safe while having a strong sense of belonging and healthy connections with those in their school buildings. Resources are available to staff, students, families, caregivers that enable them to access their education. And school community members feel those resources are accessible for them.
Awesome.
Yeah.
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 I just had one suggestion for the last, um, bullet point there, I wrote it in the comment, but, um. Because this one, you know, we do have a, a. Priority of academic achievement, I wonder if we can change the wording to that last bullet point, that this is more about social emotional well-being and not. About accessing their educate, like the resources to access their education, maybe resources, um, to ensure their social emotional well-being. Something along those lines.
I, I thought about that too, I just wanted to, the reason I kind of liked education is because. I think we want to look at social, emotional and belonging in the context of. A school that provides education and that. One of the reasons that we want people to feel this way is so that they can access the education with the idea being that. If they're not feeling safe, if they're not feeling belonged, if they don't feel sense belonging, it impedes their education. I think if we move it beyond that, there, people could feel fine in school and not feel fine in their lives, and I'm not sure that the. I'm not sure the mission of a school is to provide. General mental health outside of the context of making sure people have the emotional safety and wellness to access their education, and maybe I still there's a little ambition for you. Like, if our, if our goal is to just make sure everyone who comes in contact with the school gets the emotional and mental health support they need. Rather than in the context of what they need to achieve the mission of the school. Then we kind of want her to become a, a mental health.
Yeah, it's sort of what we were talking about in the first round, which is, um, readiness to learn. Like providing them all of the resources, which would include social emotional well-being to be, to feel ready to learn. So that makes sense to me.
And maybe we'll have one more. Small group session, maybe there's a little bit of refining that the next small group can do that to bring both of those things out. Um, or to bring the social emotional within the context of education out.
I think too, for the next group, I do, I actually, I like the phrase readiness to learn, and I wonder if that can specifically be woven in there. Um, and then I do think, and I had put in a comment that I think some, um. For purposes of being specific and word efficient, that we, um, get clear on which groups. Are, which groups, uh. Are intended for which indicators, like, do we intend this indicator for students, staff, families, caregivers, or do we specifically intend this indicator for students and staff? Those so that we are being realistic about, you know, the reach and the capacity of the school and just that it is, you know, kind of circles back to what our primary, you know, function and mission is, is the school. Um, and I think probably just for a word efficiency purpose, like choosing families or caregivers, and I feel like in this district, we largely lean toward caregivers, so maybe just sticking with that. Just for simplicity and word efficiency readability. Okay, any other thoughts?
I, I feel like this last D should be moved just one up, and then C should be the final sentence.
Cool. All right, uh, Jill and I will go next, we had Libby's help on this, um, as well. So we took that feedback from the last big group to point, um, that really to, to have this be a. The way that we talk about it being not just centered around the board, but the. Somebody's, uh, uh, students or a, um, caregiver's experience with the district holistically, so, um, we did quite a bit of, um, revising. And it currently reads, our students are more likely to be successful when our whole school community is engaged in their education. Success looks like a broad and diverse group of stakeholders who contribute to the school community and the decisions of the board. And the board maintains a communication loop with the community about its decisions. Our educators honor and recognize families' backgrounds, connect family engagement to student learning, and create welcoming, inviting cultures. Our families are supporters, encouragers, monitors, advocates, decision makers and collaborators in their children's education.
In the vein of moving sentences around, and I'm wondering if you're, you had the sentence that I was talking about, success looks like. That I feel like is the final. Sentence, and the, yeah, going after three to four.
And I don't even know if that first sentence needs to be there, um, because we do talk about, um, the importance of. Uh, a collaborative approach to learning for the success of students up in approach, the approach section, so anyway, just. Potentially an edit on my own writing.
I mean, I, I like it because. The community, each, multiple parts of the community are, are singled out individually, and so we talk about our. Or you've written about our students, our educators, our families and supporters, and so I like that that is there.
And that, that ties back to the conversation that we had about, is there, is there a role for and a benefit of. Defining, I feel like that's sort of like a definition of, um, you know, that opening sentence of what, of, of how we believe students are successful, so. And while some of those things are mentioned in the approach section up above, said upstairs, um, but. How often are people going to be scrolling back and forth to kind of look at that foundational piece, so does it make sense to kind of weave some of that. Where defining foundational understandings into, um, these priorities, so that's just something for us to continue to chew on, but.
Any other thoughts? Who, the engagement and accountability?
I mean, I like the final line. I. The, what it doesn't do is it doesn't, I think, respect that, that families might have different approaches to how they want to engage in their children's education. And it seems to create an expert. It seems, it seems. It's, it seems to create an expert that if families aren't doing that. That. It may be not meeting the expectations of the district.
Could we say our families are welcomed as?
I was going to say, are, are welcomed or given, you know, full opportunity to be, you know, that type of thing, so it's, it's a. Yeah. It allows, it allows families to do it if they want to, but if some families are a little more, you know, hey, the school's educated our kids and we, we trust it and then we stay away, that's fine too.
It's pretty funny, you can't see this, but as you were talking, the camera is zooming in on you, so now there's like. How do you feel about that?
I don't know, I, I, I can't see it, so.
Sorry, but I had to say something.
I'm wondering, just, so the, now the last sentence where Scott moved it to, that it's still, um. It's still reads a little like board centric, and I'm just wondering, I, and, and I'd like to hear from Libby on this or anyone with thoughts. Like, would it? Would it be problematic to say decisions of the board and district or board and administration? Like, is there? You know, a maintains that the board and administration maintains a communication loop with the commu-, you know what I mean?
I do know what you're saying, I don't know that we want to require that our administrators report out on every decision that they make, so. But I do think actually at board level decisions, that is appropriate, so that's where I get a little stuck on.
I think part of my challenges that I consider the board part of the district, the board is an integral part of the district, so the word district. In my mind, the word district encompasses. The board, and one of the things we talked about was that we're talking broad right now, right? When you get to specific, that's where there could be specific board indicators. I guess that's why I'm wondering, why are we calling out the boards, because I think, when I think about like, um. The, the people who have come to us to talk to us about communication issues, they're typically not, some people are complaining specifically about. The board and how we communicate, but I also feel like we receive a lot of feedback around, like, I'm not hearing. This from my teacher, my kid's teacher, I'm not hearing this from, like, I feel like the individual. Caregiver and student experience is not typically with the board around communication and engagement.
But I think we get on that, get to that within the second sentence.
Our educators honor and recognize families' backgrounds, connect family. Engagement to student learning and create welcoming, inviting cultures.
So if someone is, I think we're addressing that, and maybe that's something that can happen with better refinement in the next small group. But I, yeah, it was one of the things that, um, Jill and I were talking about was like. We couldn't get that, we couldn't figure out how to put it all in one sentence, have it at the different levels of the district, the board level and the school level, for example. So we ended up putting them in separate sentences, but I think the whole thing does address what you're saying, just not that one particular sentence.
And I just took a hacksaw to what was there, and I can undo all my changes very easily, um, but I took out the board entirely and just changed the end of that sentence. To be inclusive of the board and the rest of the district, at least amendment.
We kind of talked, this is kind of, this, this has kind of come up, is like how transparency is sort of this double edged sword where. The districts, the board decisions. The board is accountable for those decisions and, and transparency. Is needed, but transparency is not always necessarily. Not at every level, it's not necessarily required at every level of, of this different decision-making processes. The other thing I'm thinking about as we're talking about whether to use for the, the, whether to report to board in this paragraph or not. Is that I've often felt like. If there, if. Meeting members are unhappy and they're criticizing the board, I would far prefer that to criticizing teachers. And if there's a way that the board can take heat that can protect our teachers and administrators. I would, I would like, I think that that's an essential function of the board, because especially, you, you have to take it too, but especially our teachers. They want to have a protective. Effects on teachers trying to do our our work.
Yeah, I think I think Scott, I do disagree with making it like putting trans. Layering transparency for every single decision. I would say that for sure, board decisions absolutely need to happen transparently. And we should be accountable.
Yeah, we have, we have, you know, as me as I think we have a special relationship with the community too.
Thoughts on this one? I I will say I um think that having something about. Circling back on board decisions with the community would be is important to have language like that in here. Because that was the biggest piece of feedback we got from the survey that we did about community engagement with the board. Now that is. We only asked about board community engagement in that particular survey um and it what but it was overwhelming, people asking for it. Will you just? Tell us what you decide and do a quick recap for us. So I think that. To me feels like a clear indicator of success when that is happening um consistently.
So, yeah, I'm gonna push back a little bit. I hear what y'all are saying. Um it doesn't say all decisions, right? And. I still think being. Closing the loop is an example of being transparent and accountable.
Agreed.
And so if we're trying to be. We're trying to zoom out and not just talk about the board, but talk about the district, which is inclusive of the board. Wouldn't we want? The district. To be transparent and accountable. And the board mechanism might be closing the loop, whereas. The leadership team mechanism might be, you know, sending out updates. Because I'm not really doing a good job particularly, but. I do think it's important for us to think of the board as part of the district and not something separate. Um, and I do think, yeah, like. Yeah.
I think I what I hear you saying is that you think there should be transparency at all levels. And that that is okay for that to be stated here.
Absolutely.
And as much as is reasonable. Like, I think that for anyone to read into this, you know, like, and maybe we can clarify in one of our goals. You know, that like when we're talking about um communication and looping back. That or when we're talking about transparency and we like write a specific goal for transparency, that it could be. Specified there when appropriate, right? It's like. I feel like most reasonable people would know that there's going to be a million decisions made on a daily basis that are not going to be transparent. Right? And there's a lot of information that cannot be provided for legal reasons to the community. And I feel like that's. In the spirit of this, like, I I guess I'm not worried about and and if some an individual does read it that way, we can educate them.
Yeah, I I hear that and I I that makes a lot of sense to me and certainly at that. End of the spectrum of like legal reasons. One, one question that. Just to tease this out a little further that I have is like, you know, the district just made a big decision to get to to use this panorama data system. Would we expect that that would be done in a transparent matter where because I think one could argue. That wasn't done in a transparent matter, you know, the administrators just decided to do it. We were informed of it. We were not, even the board was not like, hey, these are the three we're we're thinking about here, you know. This is the one we think we're gonna go with. We need you to weigh in. I think it's totally fine that that wasn't done in a in a transparent matter, but it doesn't reach the level of like, oh, we need F R B. So I did, I just, I wanted to throw that out there as a way of teasing out this conversation as a. Almost like a case study.
I mean, I I think the. The thing about that is it. It was really kind of a system decision. I think like the data was there, like this is, this is the tool that we're gonna invest in.
Right.
Data we have. It wasn't a decision about, well, we're gonna stop tracking this thing or we're gonna start tracking this thing. It wasn't, it wasn't substantive so much as as presentation play.
I just wonder, would that be the kind of thing that somebody could go, you just made a really big decision, but you didn't do it transparently if if that's the way we have. If that that's the expectation we set of what success looks like. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, that depends on the proper.
I mean, I feel like with each one of these uh priorities. There's a way to read into it in a way where we're setting ourselves up to be offering way more like over promising. Right with if you go back to the one that I spent a little more time on belonging, safety and wellness, like. I'm sure there's a way for community members to read that as like, you're responsible for my students, you know, emotional well being and. You know, you need to be held accountable to, you know, how are they as an individual feeling? Say, right? And it's like, sure, on some level, yes. And then what Jim is talking about too is like, we can't be responsible for everything. And so I think these are aspirational, um but. But I don't think we should be afraid of people reading into them to hold us accountable for things that are that are beyond possibility. I I just want to also raise that transparency was a big. Theme of Nathan's work, like the visioning process too. And I know that that word holds a lot of weight and we're a little bit nervous. About the word transparency, but I I would encourage us to. Infuse the language of the of the indicator with transparency somehow because it was a huge value um in that vision work. Another idea that Scott had during our work is we were, we were having a similar conversation around the word equitable. In our con- in in our last meeting. And up above under values where it says respect, equity, inclusion, empathy, accountability. So I feel like that's an an opportunity for us to sort of define some of these, you know, like what is our working definition of accountability? And I feel like in accountability, we could provide some caveats to what we're capable of providing around transparency. Or maybe and or maybe the level of decision making, you know, I think um. In the policy committee, we tend to try to like provide a lot of like wiggle room for the district in the way that the words that we choose. Um in the policies, so that it can be like shale or you know what I mean? Like there's wording, words, nothing that can be done to. Make sure that we're not boxing ourself in to like, oops, we chose this new like grading platform. And now the community is pointing to this indicator as a way to say that we, you know.
Right, and we might, and maybe that is something that should should be made.
I think whenever possible and appropriate, I think the more transparency and in community engagement. The better. But I also know, you know, I've been on the board for a while now and I know that things sometimes have to happen. Quickly and even when you have your best intentions out there and you provide six different ways for community to engage on a decision, they don't. And we have to move forward. And so.
All right, well, this is all really good feedback for the last small group. Whoever it is, I can remember is, yeah, right. Let's hear it, Kristen's here. Um let's move on to the um closing the academic gap. Achievement gap um. Where have you landed so far?
Who wants to report out?
Uh yeah, I'm happy to. Um so first thing we did was we decided that it would be good to add. A word to our um. Priority. And so we propose calling it the academic achievement gap and not just the academic gap or just the achievement gap. So.
So the current language is opportunity gap in the literature, right? So take that for what you will.
And yeah, we get so.
A third word in there.
Yeah, we we talked about that as well and.
Well, I I feel like it's a different definition, like when we're talking about what opportunities students have to achieve is different from talking about what they ultimately achieve academically.
And.
But I've been, I've been out of the field for a little bit, so.
Sorry, I want to jump in here because it was important to us to step out of the literature jargon and. And name what we think our community would understand. And I don't know that. If they if if I don't know exactly what opportunity gap is, but I have a better. I'm more comfortable with understanding my understanding of academic achieving methods. So that's where, that's why we landed there. Um up for debate certainly. Um and then we also expanded um the the previous iteration. Um and did a little bit of moving around. Um and the main thing we added was a. The piece about the systems. So bullet point number two, I guess. Number two in the list, um we we added a piece about um, yeah, those mechanisms. Um that was similar to the um one of the pre- one of the other groups. Maybe the belonging, safety, wellness. So we kind of modeled the belonging, safety and wellness. Approach in the this priority. And then put the the final statement of at the our graduates, um sort of the the. Like what success would look like would be our graduate, the the fourth item, our graduates envisioning limitless path to their future. Chosen pursuits of continuing the benefit themselves. Oh, and then the piece that I I think I'm just brought up about, we were talking about whether or not we should be defining equitable in. This priority and then we realized, oh, there's all this text above there and we have our values, including equity. And so I think. And I agree with what was said before, it would be if we're gonna say our value is respect and equity and inclusion, then. What do we mean by that? And then that would help if we use those terms throughout our priorities.
And are you, was your thinking then that the A through H here would also be part of the indicator?
That that's the the detail that we didn't want to lose. So we didn't, we didn't touch any of that.
Got it.
That's the 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 specifics that we were trying to avoid for this.
Yep, great. Any? Thoughts for the next small group to consider as far as the wording of this indicator? I appreciate that you've added the systems of place to measure and monitor and support.
Question that I'm thinking, so in one of the. In one of the other indicators or in other priorities, the very last. Statement was success is dot, 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 dot. Should we, should number four be? Success is our graduates envisioning, dot, 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 dot. Or just a sense.
I think it could be, I I actually wasn't sure it that needed to be there in the last sentence. That's the community engagement. It was sort of the like, this is how I was getting it out of my brain, but I don't know if it's how it is. Right. Any other thoughts before we move to our final small group round? All right, good, good discussion team. So I've shifted up the small groups a little bit from what they were originally. So on closing the achievement gap um is gonna be um Kristen and me. Belonging, safety and wellness will be Rhett and Emma and communication and community engagement is going to be Scott, Jill and Jim.
Has anyone else been on community engagement? Because I have not yet. So if I could switch places with somebody who has not.
I've been on belonging, safety and wellness.
You know what I'm saying?
Sure, yes. And yeah, I think that's fine at this point. We've all talked about them enough. I was trying to keep that continuity, but I think it's fine at this point. Yeah, so Jill and Emma will swap. And Jill, you can go to belonging, safety and wellness with Rhett. And Emma, you can do the community engagement with Scott. And Jim. Fifteen minutes for this one.
We're just finalizing this.
It's been a big deal over my. A sentiment, a spirit, maybe that's like. That we're not doing a very good job of this. And by we, I mean the greater we, not just the board, but like. In general, people feel sort of just.
Over, over promising.
More access. Like there are something.
While I agree with that statement and yes. It's kind of. Every. Everything that we. Right, like, so there is, there is, that is in place. What we can do is, everything we can.
But maybe it's when. Crises or events. Is responsible for.
Procedures in place that are reverse.
Yeah, and so let's give a. I don't know if we want. You know, our entire seventh grade. So it's, it's a difficult one and it's the same. I it's like, you know, we want to say that.
You can honor, recognize. And so I do think like keeping.
Prioritizing.
We can honor, recognize background.
You know, there's just always someone that has that in terms of.
Understand the value of.
Intentional systems.
Yeah.
You know, like, we could think of other words besides.
We could think of other words besides. Right, because I think. Promise that things are not gonna happen to our students. Help people become more resilient.
So I just, so. And I also feel like it's a really.
And I think we're doing a lot of enabling of fragility, um, right now, so. It's a, and we have some staff who.
That's my favorite.
And you have some staff where like. The one that, so it's, it's just a really. You know. Is that enabling for? Right, like it's, I mean, I'm sure you've got lots of thoughts on it.
Well, yeah, and also like I. You know, I.
Is not the school culture.
There's been a lot of the. Ways in which.
Not, not.
I don't know, anyway. Um, what about when circumstances arise and disrupt? I don't know if that's the right way. But, uh, when disruptive circumstances arise, maybe.
Or what about just, uh. Go back to the system.
The decision makers.
Decision maker.
I think we want families to build an agency over. Decisions that affect our students.
I love having. My is that something hard is watching it and boards and that's. Right, they should not. And that there. We expect it.
They're, yeah, they're giving. And I think if we. If that becomes our indicator, then.
Strong sense of belonging.
You could also make it as like decision makers in their creative states education.
Right, so students have family caregivers.
Right, like I would like to.
To our district.
Understand how that impacts. Parents as decision makers and that they're. I do think, not mine, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and that's where I feel. That's why it's it's rough, because I think there are places where.
Physically safe.
Not to say like they're giving input, but they're actually. Have the ability to say no, like, that's not good for my kid.
Yeah, I don't know, I think there is something about like. I know, it's like.
They do, and and they're not gonna stop. Whether or not we have.
An environment in place that. And when it doesn't happen.
And then. Right, like that's like, I'm sorry. I'm winning, and I don't think we need to put. I had to get away from that. I think it's just sort of like, what's the biggest? I get it. Feel like physically safe and we're gonna like wash it, wash all the work. So far.
I do think it's my employment, because I started to everything they can. So what happens when one of my staff members who has a child.
Spirit and maybe address.
You know, like, there's, there's lots of things that.
Acknowledging.
You know. Provides support.
As appropriate here. I know. Or whether or not to put a comma. But all, I mean, as appropriate, I think goes throughout the entire, but that's like what you were saying. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the values. Under accountability, like decision making inclusion. I just feel like then.
More individualized, which is how yours most recently, like every bit of research says that's. Trickles out kind of thing, doesn't work, you need, you know, like their, in their opinion, it was more. Does anything about this, so that, you know, where it's like. It just, that's not an accurate statement. The rest is like everyone. And we need to not re-traumatize people or.
Because, uh, to me, like what the word that's important to use at, like that they should be.
I. No, it's fine. Yeah.
And then that gets to. Work to be safe. Um, so can we go back to this sentence real quick? With our last minute.
Remind you.
Can we define inviting relationships? We can find out like.
That they'll never be out of. They were talking to. Their psychologist and I was. I was there to support psychologists that should be sitting or whatever. And he was talking about this. Just this paragraph.
Yes.
You go to the grocery store. So. I think, I think the, you know, they're honoring. They're doing that. How about educators communicate? And it was brilliant. Because it's all about. And you take for granted. I can trust what you're saying. Somebody told me that you're delusional now, I think everything you said.
Our educators are honoring and are infused in the way that they.
But I'm fragility.
So, anyway. As a supervisor too, right, like, you know, like or. There's, yeah. So I get the way I saw that, you know, the indicators would be. Less. Specific. Alright, so we're gonna move these.
Okay.
To down here.
Oh.
Alright. It's actually, how's it going, everybody?
So this last part of the sentence was very last. Abroad and diverse.
Do we separate these?
Decisions that are transparent. A broad group of stakeholders who contribute to decisions that are transparent and accountable.
Read it when they're separated out.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Getting a little like. I already have summer brain. Then it's like flood brain. I had a little bit last week. Um, but decisions that are made with transparency and accountability or no, just let fewer words, the better.
Right, so Emily's dream, yeah, water, I think, and then we move back in, we will do a. Final readout of where they stand right now. And talk about next steps. I'm gonna look ahead.
It's this idea that we teach kids, particularly girls. Right, with their. Situation, so I'm getting everybody to social media. Versus those two.
Alright. So we are reporting out where we've landed, and I think it's time for group three to kick us off. Even though you weren't, anyway, yes, community engagement and accountability. How's it looking?
That's here.
Oh, yeah, that's you. Nope, that's facilitator error.
We talked about just sort of trying to, trying to. Round the language in the work that was done with the visioning committee. And make sure that we're staying true to like, keep anchoring back to. What our community is asking. From us in this community engagement and accountability piece, so. Um. And with Jim, the lawyer on board and Scott, the wordsmith, we were able to, uh, change a little bit, but we felt like brought it back to that. Um, so I'll just read it for the sake of people who aren't on the live document. Um, our students are more likely to be successful when our whole school community is engaged in their education. Our educators communicate effectively in a manner that honors and recognizes families' backgrounds and connects family engagement to student learning to foster inviting. Collaborative relationships. Our families are valued collaborators, partners, monitors, advocates and decision makers in their children's education. Success looks like a broad and diverse group of stakeholders who contribute to the school community and decisions that are transparent and accountable.
Awesome.
I just want air just for. That I'm aware and and we're better. I I I like the intent behind saying that families are decision makers. I think we need to acknowledge that they're not decision makers in all things. Um, there are places where I think they should be decision makers. I mean, like, thinks it specifically, in fact. Their child, maybe not all things specifically, their job, but certain, certainly decisions about their child's education. Um. They're not gonna be decision makers of who will be. I mean, just, they're not gonna be decision makers and, I mean, they can. Give input to the decision-making process and we value their partnership as part of that, but. They're not ultimately gonna be decision makers of probably most of the decisions that the school administration makes, so. Um. I just wanna be careful about the expectation we might set up with that indicator. Uh, I think most community members are going to realize that there's a. As appropriate in there, but. There are gonna be community members that may not fit.
Jim did type as appropriate and we deleted, that's why I chuckled. So we. Pushing back, just trying to be like, you know, this is. We're, we're hoping that our community can be reasonable when reading this, and if we just go into like lawyer mode and make sure that everyone is perfect. Then it's gonna read like a legal.
Right, it's not about, right, we want it to be accessible.
Yes, and so.
Yeah.
And we also circle back to the potential for using the, the values. Section as a way to flesh out some of these definitions around expectations that the community may have.
Yeah.
If we say, you know, we value you as a decision maker, what does that mean?
It sort of goes back to transparent as well, right? It's almost like.
Exactly.
As appropriate.
Right.
Yeah.
Here are some, here's, here's the parameters within which these things apply. Or you're the appropriate roles. And why. There. I have a. I know y'all talked a lot about the word transparent. Do you feel like transparent is enough to, to include that whole like? I know y'all talked a lot about the word transparent, do you feel like transparent is enough to, to include that whole like, we, we loop back on decisions that we've made? Or should we put that, that wording in there where the board? Is like. Looks back out on decisions, or something like that?
I, I think I said this last time, and so I'm, I hesitated to say it again, but I, I. Try and like accountability, it to me includes.
Great.
And so I don't think it needs to be spelled out.
Okay.
And I also see the value.
Yeah.
I do think it's possible that this second bullet point, instead of saying our educators, right? That could be all of us, and instead of specifically calling out educators.
Hmm.
Who I think people maybe are just thinking are the classroom teachers.
And principals.
I, yeah. So I, I wonder if we could make a little list there that includes the board, you know, educators.
Mr. MRPS.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I really like that edit because I think that we also want to state an expectation that our families communicate effectively too.
Yes.
And in a way that honors. The backgrounds and expertise of. Everybody in the. District. So I know that, that I like that edit.
Um, and I do feel like, I like the communication loop because that's been sort of a theme that's been arising is like us reporting back to people on. Because it's not that things aren't being done, it's that sometimes they're just not caring about the stuff that's being done. So I, I like. Capturing that, it's still in there as a comment, right?
I just cleaned, I just cleaned it out because we were saying accountability. Encompassed. Closing the loop.
Yeah. And I also feel like it could be, it could be fleshed out more specifically in some of the goals.
Uh-huh. Yep, and as you're saying, when we get, when we define what accountability looks like as a value.
Yep.
I feel really uncomfortable about families being decision makers in their children's education because my kids are in your classroom, and what if I don't like your decisions?
All the time.
You know what I mean? Like, it's, it, it's a collaborative effort. And so when any individual family. Is under the impression that they decide what their children will be taught, it affects everyone. That's around their child, their child. And I don't, I might not want. That. I, I trust Libby. I don't trust you.
I, I completely agree, and the way I see this is we are valuing that parents make decisions in their children's education. We are not valuing that parents make all of the decisions that affect their ju, their children. Right, but the reality is that. Parents make countless decisions that affect their children, and we value that in our district.
I don't see how parents are decision makers, they're collaborators, they're.
I have an example, I have an example, like. I have decided that I will enforce. That there's thirty minutes of reading every day after school in my house. That's a decision I've made. Based on what I want for my, for my kid's education, it doesn't necessarily impact what happens in the classroom, but I am a decision maker in my child that.
That checks.
So I will.
Context, that means.
I'll give another example that's a little bit more like school centered, but um, you know, my son is going into his junior year of high school. And I feel valued as a decision maker at the table when decisions are being made about what classes he's choosing for the next year by hit the guidance counselor. His guidance counselor has been very mindful to be inclusive of. Um, me and my husband like in emails and decisions that are being made, you know, like, should he take a P for this class, or should he get the grade as part of his transcript? Should he move into Spanish three, or should he stop his second language journey? You know, and, and I'm a, a voice at the table of that decision making process, and I want to be valued in that way. So I don't think it's, I don't. This is where, this is, this is where the conversation came from, it's like, how literal do we take every word out of context in the, in this, in the language? And there are probably going to be people, and I like the way Scott put it, he's like, those people are always going to be, no matter how you word it. Where they're gonna come and expect to be able to make like the ultimate decision maybe. Um, and then it's about how do we manage those expectations when they arise, but I don't feel that the way it's worded, um. You know, it could reasonably be interpreted that way.
I, I think when I put, when I connect value to decision maker, value decision maker, it makes more sense.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of words in between.
Well, let's leave it like that for now, so that we can move on to the next.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I mean, that situation though, where you've got like the, you know, like. Open twenty-four hours and someone comes, says you're closing, and it'd be like, since that's his open twenty-four hours, be like, well, we'll knock it rough. I mean, it's like. So.
Let's go to academic. Um, achieving gap. Um, Kristen and I just did a tiny bit of refining here, we left some of it in, so you all can see the changes we made, but some of it we felt pretty good about. Um, the first one is every student has the confidence and skills. To achieve excellence and to support continuous growth along their learning journey, journey. So we just slotted in achieving excellence there, but leaving the continuous growth along their learning journey. Um, systems are in place to measure, monitor, and support students on their unique path towards meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. We left that one the same, I think. And then we wanted to put a little bit more of the onus on, um. Uh. It, I think the onus was already there on the district, but this, I think we shifted it just slightly more by adding, by, by switching up this language a little bit. There are no barriers to academic success based on identity or socioeconomic status for MRPS students. All students have the access they need to opportunities that will help them succeed. And that in the second sentence, that edit there is a, is our way of trying to take. Um, equitable, which is a little bit of a jargony word in education and other. Sort of quote unquote industries these days, but make it a little bit more of like, this is what we need by equitable, is that they have the access they need. Um, and having it be more just like plain speak, um, which, uh, I think. Does it? Um, and then our graduates envision a limitless path to their futures and chosen pursuits of continued learning that benefits them and their communities, uh, that one we. Left the same. And then we had at the very end a small conversation about though, all those that like A through H that were the much more. Quantitative things, and we've moved them to goals for the conversation at the next part of the retreat.
Mm-hmm.
Thoughts?
I. I struggle a little bit with this rewording here of the, there are no barriers to academic success, success based on identity and socioeconomic status. The way that it was worded before. The way I'm reading it, um, are not predictive of academic success, it's sort of like, we wanna, we want to make sure that we are. Doing everything we can to, um, for kids who come from. Lower socioeconomic status or have certain barriers, you know, the opportunity gap that we were talking about. Um. Barriers to their learning. That we wanna provide enough, um, support in, within the school environment that they had, that you can't take out the free and reduced lunch students. And see a clear correlation to their, you know, uh, test scores.
Yeah.
And so to me, like, that's the, that's the goal, is that we don't, and maybe it is a, a goal and not an indicator. But to say there are no barriers, it's like. In, by their very nature, like, that is a barrier.
Hmm.
You know, like, if I'm coming from a family that nobody in my family has ever been to college. You know, all of my ancestors, right? That's a barrier, and I think it can be named as such. Like, it's, you know, I'm working at, at a distinct disadvantage to the kid whose parents have been talking about college since birth and dressing them in a little Harvard onesie or whatever. Like, there is, that is what the opportunity gap is, like, if my. Parents don't have money to pay for an outside tutor and another family's parent does, that's a barrier.
Yeah.
Like, and, and it can be named, like, it's like, that is what we're talking about when we're talking about.
And what we're doing is working against those barriers.
Right, but to word it as there are no barriers to academic success based on identity, and so like, that is just wrong, like, there are barriers. There are, it's such a difficult barrier to overcome, and that's why. Pretty much every school across the nation, if you look at their free and reduced lunch population, it would poorly, but. You know, so, and that's why I said in a meeting a long time ago, I was like, if we can, if we can make this happen, like, we're gonna be like getting national news attention, you know, like. Because it is such a barrier.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I completely agree, it's a, it's a very, very well, there, there are, I mean, not just, aren't there, there are barriers, and I think our job is to recognize these barriers and then do what we can to give students cool to.
And I think, yeah, kind of what you were getting at, right, in this provision was also that MRPS will work to eliminate those barriers to the extent that we can. Right, that there is a limit, that there are these. Kind of preconditioned culturally informed system, uh, induced, you know, um, barriers that now we as, as a district are left with to try and do our best to solve and reduce.
And I, I mean, never gonna like eliminate them, I think it's like given. Students who've been overcoming, I mean, for instance, like. You, you can't eliminate the fact that someone might not live in a household that values a college education and can navigate the process, but you can. Instill in students that they're. Yeah, that they have the tools to succeed in college, and then giving guidance counseling that can guide them through the college process in a way that some families. Might be able to guide their own children through the college process, you can do things like that.
Scott, are you trying to edit it so that?
Yeah, I'm trying to. Thread the needle of combining the two and.
Mm-hmm. What if it's the barriers to academic success based on identity and socioeconomic status?
Yes.
Don't predict. Uh, that's like. Making it a longer sentence maybe than it needs to be, the thing, the thing that I was trying to get at is that. Someone's. Identity. Might actually be a predictor. In, as a benefit to their academic success, there could be strengths and, or there are strengths and. And benefits that come with. You know, being. A gay black kid, and we wanna make sure that that is celebrated as well as recognize that there are also things in your education that are harder about that. Anyway, so, but that might be just like a too. Small of a head of a needle to thread with these indicators of success.
Mm-hmm.
So I think I did what you just said. And. I'm off to the.
No, you did do what I just said, but now we have. Academic success twice, which I think is easy enough to. Yeah, I think it's easy enough to clean up. Yeah, you did do what I said.
How about, why don't we just. Say any barriers based on identity and socioeconomic status of students don't predict academic success.
Yep.
Well, and I like what you were, you know. You started. Jim, you started to sort of word it in a way that like MRPS recognizes the barriers and actively works to.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Uh, so some, something like that I like too. You know, like, if we don't wanna just that, cause I think. I think the. It not being predictive of academic success could easily be moved into like the goal category, so if we wanna be more like evergreen about it. We could talk about like our, our, it's part of our mission and vision to work to.
Could we say?
Not eliminate, but sort of.
Any barriers based on identity and socioeconomic status of students. Um. Want to say are recognized and.
I, I think it's enough to just say it's not gonna predict their.
Yeah, I, I think so too, and then, and then we can get to the, I think implicit in that is the. In order for it not to predict, we have to recognize that.
Exactly.
And give the tools to.
And work, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
What do folks think about the edits in the second sentence of that?
Like it.
I. I really like that.
Yeah, go for it, okay.
Yeah, that's good.
So then let's keep it moving.
Now, and I, I like how. You guys really tightened the indicators early.
And get us to wrapping up with belonging, safety and wellness.
Do we summarize the changes or read the whole thing again?
Let's read the whole thing again in the interest of time, cause I do wanna have a little bit of time to be closing. Before we.
So there are. Five bullets now, we added one. All students, staff and families, caregivers feel welcomed in our schools and valued for the unique history, identity and beliefs that they bring to the school community. The environment, systems and opportunities that foster student and staff wellness are present, successful and thriving in our schools. Students, staff and family, families, caregivers can expect to feel safe and have a strong sense of belonging and healthy connections to our school district. When disruptive circumstances arise, the district provides structures and systems to build resiliency. Resources are available to staff, students, families, caregivers that enable them to access their education, and school community members feel those resources are accessible for that. So. Libby pointed out that when it was believed that there was a potential shooter in school. Kids did not feel safe in a short period of time, and we can't always control. That whether or not people feel safe, but certainly. Provide supports as needed when those circumstances come up.
Mm-hmm.
So that was kind of. We, we kind of, we kind of landed on can't expect to feel safe. And so. Will feel safe, because that's not entirely in our control.
And also just ensuring we're embedding that resiliency, because part of safety and wellness is also, you know, sort of that resiliency as a skill for. You know, these other. To continue on the theme of where kids go after they're done at MRPS, that resiliency is a important. Skill that's part of. And being part of a safe community.
Really.
And then there. Thoughts or feedback on this one? I wonder if just adding. On that blue bullet, when disruptive circumstances arise that jeopardize the line, safety and wellness. Just to, I don't know, it feels like. A disruptive circumstance, it, it feels, it could feel out of context if folks don't really understand, we're obviously not gonna name a specific incident, but. It could be a microaggression or it could be like catastrophic.
Right.
Could be, yeah. So.
Um. Then maybe not have the word disrupted and have what you said. Circumstances arise that.
Threatening.
Jeopardy, I like jeopardize.
Jeopardize, yeah.
Feeling of.
Sure. Any other thoughts?
I think these are good, I think, yeah, and I think all.
Can I take out?
All three of these are fairly point solid.
Yeah.
Yep. Really solid.
Yeah.
Strong work team.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking of me for. Guiding us through this.
Team, really team effort, you know, like reminding those. Ground us in what the, what came out of the visioning study, small, the prep work ahead of time, all this really got us to where we are. With some very solid. Indicators of success. Good work, everyone.
So the board meeting next Wednesday.
Yeah.
Will be starting to work on the more specific bullet areas, correct?
No, that's a, on the sixth.
That's on the sixth, yes, okay, so this next Wednesday was just a reserve, we needed more time here.
For this, yeah.
So maybe. Words are getting it on one sheet and.
Yeah.
Giving some time for it, just to make sure.
I, yeah, yeah, I think that makes sense, I can do some, I can do the cleanup of it. Beforehand, I won't be at next week's board meeting, cause I am on vacation, but I can do the cleanup of it beforehand, and I think it's a good idea to kind of like, present it and maybe. I don't know if we're gonna vote on it necessarily, but just codify it in a board meeting so that.
Yeah.
Community, the community can see it done, I mean, I know this was all a public meeting and everything, but. Not in our regular schedule, so I think it's a good idea to do, what Libby just recommended, and then. I don't know, yeah, and then on the sixth, we'll move on to setting goals.
Yeah, and I think we can. Put a little aside, time aside, just for, you know. How it would have to be.
Yeah, right.
Thoughts.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's next week's board meeting, and then looking ahead to the meeting on the sixth, which is going to be part two of this retreat, is where we will be getting concrete with bulls. And so the. With goals. And so the question that I'm posing to all of us is. What do you feel like you need in order to set goals? Is there any information that you? Don't have at your fingertips or questions that you, and you know, you might not know those questions at this very moment, but that's sort of our homework for the next. Two to three weeks is to think about that and, you know, put yourself in the space of, okay, in that meeting, I'm gonna need to. Say what I think a goal should be for belonging, safety and wellness for the next one to two years, let's just say. Could I do that right now? Or is there, is there, do I have missing information? And then if the answer is more, I have missing information, try and think about what that is and, you know. Send, leave me an email, like, can I get something? Can I get X, Y or Z from Jess Murray or Mike Barry or whatever in that lead up time? And the more time they have to do it, like our administrators can't just pull that necessarily out in twenty-four hours notice, so. Um, you'll probably need a bit of time for that. That might be actually a worthwhile part of the conversation next week is, okay. We, this is what it is. We've sat on it for a week. These are. What information, is there anything we feel like we need to know that we don't already know in order to be able to set goals? I think would be a good board discussion. Next Wednesday.
And also just, um, people just get an email, uh, due to. Due to this, like very understandable personal and professional changes, uh, Seiji has resigned from the board sadly. Um, so one, uh, I just wanna publicly thank Seiji for all this great work. Uh, but also, uh, we will be looking for a new board member. Um, that's probably all that from personal experience. It takes a little, a little while to get up to speed. Uh, so if we can, you know, give some thought to, uh, folks who might be interested and, you know, reach out to them, we'll. Uh, be putting something out publicly, um. But if we could get a new board member in place to kind of be an effective version of the budget process. So it'd be great. I think, I think that's very doable, given our times, yeah, but.
And people who are interested should just email you.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and if we can. Ideally, we could get that appointed by. I think the sixth might be too early, but I'm thinking after that, just to give plenty of time, plenty of.
You want your new board member to be part of the fun budget?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that could be enough time to, you know, make sure people have time to get the word out, think about it. And then also to have the, the, the budget process.
Is the, is there a new agenda planning calendar?
Making it right now. I was waiting until this work is done because I wanna, I wanna plan the board presentations based on this work. Based on, yeah, and the goals that we've set.
So when are our next meetings?
Sixteen.
The.
Sixteen, six, and then two weeks between six.
The meeting calendar is available online now still. It's just not in the, in a planning document, but there is the meeting calendar for twenty-one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I am on vacation next week.
Same here.
I'm here.
Was four, so.
But Lynn, we might have Lynn. So you need to know if you have Lynn.
Whatever it is.
But five, there are nine board members.
When we have a vacancy, does that reduce the number needed for a forum?
So, sorry, parliamentarian, a forum is needed only for a vote.
For decisions that are made.
So no decisions are made.
But consent agenda is a decision.
Yeah.
But that could potentially be pushed out or is, how important is it for it to happen on that day?
Those are warrants.
Yeah.
Pay.
Okay.
Um, so it's very many.
Well, I mean, we could move it.
I could log on for the.
I was gonna say. Online or.
If we.
Yeah, I mean, let's see how much we have.
It sounds like if we have Lynn, we'll be good.
Be good.
Mm-hmm. If we don't have Lynn, we'll have Jill log on to vote for the consent agenda.
Yeah.
And then the rest could be a brief discussion about anything you need in order to set goals.
Yeah, and we'll see how ambitious the agenda is, cause you know, Brett and Kristen, it, it might not be with, I mean, you. Slap them from Roxton, if it's gonna be a short meeting.
Hey, you can join virtually too.
We could make it a virtual meeting, if just general, because MHS is still.
Oh, yeah, that's, because MHS is still gonna be.
That's a point.
Oh, yeah, we have to find an alternative location anyways. Uh, okay, let's, let's do that. Let's just make it virtual, given, given the limited attendance, the limited agenda. And if that, that MHS is still, um. Still not, a place that we wanna be.
Or invite public to come to.
I had two thoughts, um. The board vacancy, we're in, we'll have people email you, but that, will that be publicly shared, noted via various?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get something out, um, we'll work with that, I think it's a bit out.
I can imagine right now she's at her desk already forming some sort of.
Yeah.
Wire, knowing this, knowing this, Anna, she's giggling at me right now.
Thank you, Anna. Um, and then two, in terms of thinking about goals and the continuation of this work, are we gonna kind of preorganize into groups? Just, um, it seems like anybody could suggest anything and any of the priority areas in terms of goals and data needed. But I'm just like, it was helpful to kind of have a specific priority area to sort of focus on what you're going into. So I'm curious if we're gonna. Follow similar suit.
Would others be interested in doing that? It would happen sometime before the sixth. The idea of people staying in their original groups to focus on that, but then, and then doing kind of the world's cafe that you did today. Which I think probably really helpful to get other brains on. I think that was really helpful, so.
Okay, great, okay, so.
Do you wanna make any, uh, changes knowing that Seiji is not on the Belonging Safety and Wellness Committee anymore or?
Thought, I mean, any, any one of them is gonna be, and have just two people. Are there folks that would rather be in a different? Group than the one they were previously in? For the prep work? Did you wanna go to communication?
I don't have strong feelings, but I'm happy to shift if you want me to. I'll keep you ready, I'll.
It's, keep it simple. Okay, so then that'll just be. Each group should self-organize the way that we did leading up to part one of the retreat. Cause that seemed to work for giving people schedules and things like that. And if you do end up having a meeting of. Two or three people, you should warn it because it'll be discussing board business.
I guess a meeting of three people.
That's right.
One is just one person.
Did a lot of that.
Should we adjourn?
Um, yeah, we have to adjourn.
Yeah, uh, what should you adjourn?
Salute.
Uh, second.
Second.
All the favor.
Bye.